Welcome, everybody. To the May 23rd, 2022 Pennington County Planning Commission meeting. Recommendations of the Planning Commission on certain items from this agenda will be considered by the Board of Commissioners at the regular meeting on June 10th, 2022, at 10:30 a.m. Please note that the Planning Commission utilizes speaker request forms which are available in the commission chambers during the meeting. Speaker request forms look like this. If you're neither the applicant nor the agent and you wish to speak on an item, I would ask that you fill this out. It helps me keep things organized. I'd ask that you also put the agenda item number on the speaker request form. And then you can turn them into Jerry here and she'll get them to me during the meeting. With that, we'll go ahead and get started. Roll call. Note that everyone's here. Gary's here from the board. First item on the agenda is approval of the May 9th, 2022 minutes. Are there any changes or corrections to the minutes?
Mr. Chair, move to approve.
Motion in second for approval of the May 9th, 2022 minutes.
Further discussion? Hearing none and seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item number two is approval of today's agenda. Today's agenda consists of the consent agenda. Consent agenda is items three through six, followed by normal business items seven through 30? And finishing with 31 through 35 are normal end of meeting items. Are there any changes to today's agenda? Hearing none and how do you entertain a motion for approval?
Tell them to move.
Motion, motion in second. Further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Brittany?
Good morning, Commissioners. Brittany Molitor, Planning Director. The consent agenda, the following items have been placed on the consent agenda for action to be taken on all items in accordance with staff's recommendation by a single vote. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda by any planning commissioner, staff member, or audience member for separate consideration. The findings of this planning commission on certain items from this agenda are recommendations to the Pennington County Board of Commissioners who will make the final decision. Item number three is conditional use permit review CU 1801 for Ron Weifenbach to review a seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a commercial district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1801 with conditions. Item number four is conditional use permit review CU 1814 for All American Sales. Doug Bellinger is the agent to review a seasonal retail sales of Class C fireworks in a heavy industrial district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 1814 with conditions. Item number five is conditional use permit review CU 2118 for Lowell Cold to review a temporary campground assembly of people during the month of July in an agriculture district. And staff recommends approval of the extension of conditional use permit CU 2118 with conditions. And finally, item six is Minor Plant MPL 22-22 for Larry and Nancy Van Oberschild to reconfigure lot lines to create Lot 10R and Lot 11R of Bears Den subdivision. And staff is recommending approval of Minor Plant MPL 22-22 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any items that staff wishes to pull from the agenda?
No, not at this time.
Any items that the membership wishes to pull from the agenda?
Mr. Chair, item number four.
Item number four. Any others? Okay. For those in the audience that may not be familiar with the process here, items three, five, and six will all be voted on at the same time. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to speak on items three, five, or six? I don't currently have any speaker request forms for those items. Noting none, we'll pull item number four. Leaves items three, five, and six on the consent agenda. Is there a motion?
So move.
Items three, five, and six.
Second.
Motion in second for approval of items three, five, and six. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor all say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? No. Motion carries. Item four.
Mr. Chair, to limit the review, I only have a question on one item within that.
Go ahead.
It appears if we go over to the licenses, Jutima, he has a valid license for a May 1st through June 26th, as well as one for the same company, 27th through the 5th. And our hours of operation only indicate the June 1st through July 5th. And I was wondering whether the staff supported extending it to match his licenses.
Yes, we support that. Yep.
Okay. Shall we just, I don't know how you want to word it, but I could make a motion that would leave the wording acceptable to normal if the chair would feel comfortable with that. My motion would be to change condition number four to include the dates within, well, it's a special retail fireworks license.
Staff is agreeable to that as well?
Yes, that's, yes.
Okay. Questions from anybody on this?
I'd go ahead and make that a motion right now.
Okay.
Your second, if you want.
Second.
Motion in second. Further discussion? Anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item six.
Cody, SAG environmental planner, do you mean item seven?
I am corrected. We are on item seven. Thank you.
Okay. Item seven is conditional use permit CU 22-15. It is to allow a grain bin to be used as a primitive cabin rental on the subject property. The applicant landowner is Don and Troy Richter. The location of the property is a half mile east of Quinn city limits, south of Highway 14. It involves 200 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of agriculture. Access is off Highway 14 and there is special flood hazard area on the property of Zone A. When approving conditional use permits, there are seven criteria that the planning commission may look at. The answers are on the screen. I'll read them aloud. Number one, yes, it appears that by allowing this conditional use permit, they should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public considering the time limitations and the sporadic use of the applicant's request. Number two, yes, the request you should not have any long-term negative effects on the use enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normally, normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area considering the time limitations and the sporadic use of the applicant's request. Number four, yes, access is off Highway 14. Number five, yes, one rental, one cabin rental should have no impact on traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is zoned agriculture district, seasonal cabins are allowed with a conditional use permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Currently on the property, there are two grain bins. One grain bin was converted to a man cave in 2017. And there's a 24 by 48 farm building. The applicant has submitted a new onsite wastewater treatment system that will serve the rental cabins as well as the next agenda item, the RV park. The applicant is requesting to use the grain bin as a rental cabin. The applicant has upgraded the onsite wastewater treatment system and staff has not received any comments or complaints from the public on this request. So staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit 22-15 with conditions.
Thank you. Are there any questions for staff?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I have a question relative to condition number 16, which says that the applicant approves the access road to ordinance number 14 standards or obtained waivers prior to operation. Explain to me what the waivers?
So, so the waivers are the, when the applicant goes in front of the board to get that approval and the board can waive the 24 foot wide road requirements, they can waive the four inches of gravel. It's part of that request that you guys see at that meeting.
So what have to be done before the board?
Correct, yes.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff?
You have one.
Go ahead, Michael.
Cody, there's two grain bins. One of them is a man cave and the other one is going to be the rental?
No, so one of them, the man cave is the one that's going to be the rental. She has plans in the future to attach the two grain bins together.
Or just doing on?
So it'll just, it'll just be one. The other grain bin still currently used.
Okay, so I was looking at the diagram and I wasn't too sure. Okay, yeah, thank you.
Further questions for staff?
I'm disappointed that we don't have a picture of the grain bin and how it's done. Be interesting.
I do have some speaker request forms here. The first one is from Dwayne Papasek. Did I say that correctly? Sir, if you'd state your name when you come up.
I'm Dwayne Papasek and my property enjoys this area. And I'm a farmer and a rancher. And I have some concerns about it. The first one is fire. It's a quarter of a mile from a wheat field and less than a quarter of a mile from a pasture that we have cattle on. And just an example, last fall, we had a incident with a fire within a quarter of a mile of this place at night. We discovered it the next morning. I called the sheriff and he come out and investigated it. And it said, he looked to him like it was a drug deal. So that's my concerns. Another concern is pollution on this dam. If we're going to have campers out there, they're going to have fires, whatever, and pollute the dam with stuff that gets in it. Another one is trespassing. My property is a quarter of a mile from there, pasture and farmland. And we're concerned about that. And drugs and alcohol. Not a patrolled area. It's out in the country. And therefore, we oppose it.
Okay.
Questions for me?
Any questions for the speaker? Go ahead, Michael.
Sir, is your property fenced against this property?
It's fenced, yes.
Okay, I'm just curious. Thank you.
But the water, the water from this dam backs up on my property probably half a mile. And it's going to be very hard to keep trespassers off.
Okay.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
The next speaker request form I have is from Mark Papasek.
Good morning. Mark Papasek, one of four family members with the family farm and ranch immediately to the south and southeast of this property. To the point of previous family member, our main, one of our main concerns is fire. The county's own fire manager stated last July that there were 700 human caused fires last year that burned 13,000 acres. Immediately to the southeast of where this property is, we have 80 acres that we take cow calf pairs in the spring on a creek that is wooded. If a fire burns through there and burns those trees, that will materially change our cow calf operation for 30 plus years because we will not have those trees for protection of that cattle. The other concern obviously with that, with trespassing, cow calf pairs are aggressive. And we have cattle there in the springtime, we have cattle there as well in the fall time. We really, as a family, are not interested in having another buffalo extravaganza like Custer State Park has had in years past and Yellowstone has every year. In addition, as far as, sorry, but I'm going to have to respectfully disagree with meeting all the criteria. Criteria one, two, and seven specifically of your conditional use permit. This, the use of this grain bin will not, it will, I guess, materially change how we're able prospectively to use our property. Whether it be through garbage that gets onto that dam and the waters that are used, whether it be a fire that burns through the area and kills the trees and or burns off all of the cover on those fields. There's 300 acres of no till wheat stubble field immediately across the fence on this. And then in addition, the, another concern would be, is on criteria seven, how it would materially change, or I guess fit in with the planned use for eastern Pennington County. This is an off-site location. It's not like somebody, it's not like this is right at their house where they can keep an eye on it. We're going to be inviting in essentially BRBO type of tenants that have no idea as to hot exhaust systems and the grass that gets underneath of them. They have no idea around cattle. The other thing, another concern would be is in the summertime when things dry out, whether you like it or not, the new marijuana law, most hotels will not allow, at least in other states, and I'm pretty certain South Dakota won't be any different, won't allow marijuana smoking in hotel rooms. That's just going to put more pressure for those people who want to enjoy marijuana out into the outer line areas. There's no one within even eyesight with binoculars to see what's going on at this grain bin. And all emergency services in the area are volunteer with minimum of 15 minutes drive time away. Once they get to the ambulance, once they get to the fire station, police, it'll depend upon where in eastern Pennington County they're roaming. But for those reasons, I would say specifically criterias one, two, and seven, it most definitely will change. I guess I would leave you with, I would caution the commission to also take into account, it's our family as well as another neighbor who is more to the west. So the prevailing wind would not push fire, garbage, everything else so much to them. But if we start opening the door here, it'll affect everyone in the community out here as well as others in eastern Pennington County into opening this door for this type of use. Thank you.
Any questions?
Mr. Chairman.
I have a question for you.
Sure.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Do you have cell phone access when you're out there?
Yes.
Like would this property have?
Yes.
Cell phone access, 911, that sort of?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
My concern with that would be, is someone from Chicago, where do they tell the fire station to go, the fire to go to? There's no landmarks. It's cottonwood trees and grassland. They can call, but they have no idea. So I appreciate what you're getting at, but.
No, I live in an area that doesn't. So that's my basic.
Yeah.
I'm not getting it anywhere. I want to know whether you have cell phone service for yourself as well as people that are visiting.
Yep, exactly. But there's no Econo Lane, Econo Lodge or holding sign to drive up to unfortunately. Anything else?
Go ahead, Gary.
Mark, I presume that either you or Dwayne live on some of that property that?
Yes. Our house would be, let me see here, essentially directly to the south of the west side of that property.
Distance from this grain bin where you would have buildings?
We would have buildings. We have a small barn on the, calf barn on the property where we have our cow calf pairs, probably a couple hundred yards, 150 yards. I mean, in a strong wind from where that grain bin is, you could spit and hit our property. Our house, hmm, probably the way a crow flies, 500, 600 yards to the southwest.
Thank you.
Yep.
Go ahead, Michael.
And your residence is the closest residence to this?
To the south downwind, yes. Technically to the north, it would be the people requesting the conditional use permit, but they would be across Highway 14. And then, yeah. And then beyond ours, there would be, which would actually breed directly to the southeast, there's another farm ranch family operation. Their family does not immediately border, but they would be directly downwind.
So the owners of this property are across 14?
Yes. Yep.
Can they see the property?
Not through the trees. There's two creeks in between them. I mean, you can physically see the property, but I don't think they can see the grain bin. Yep. Other questions?
How far is this from the little community of Quinn?
I would say probably about a mile, but there are zero services there.
But it'd be okay to have this kind of facility in the little community of Quinn, you think?
At least if something happened or if something was getting out of control, there's 80 other people in town to keep an eye on it. So I would, I would be much more open to something like that. I'm not down on development. I'm all about somebody being able to improve something. This is just the wrong spot to do it. This is ag use ground in the country. But yeah, about a mile away is the town of Quinn. And at least there's going to be 80 other eyes on what's going on to people that are going to go there who are not used to being in, out in the wilderness.
But there are fences.
There are. But fences don't stop people from climbing right through.
But I think you're thinking the worst of these people, not the best.
Unfortunately, I have to, because if a fire goes through and burns those trees, we don't have another pasture with tree protection to take our cow calf pairs within cattle driving distance to keep them after calving. It will materially change our cow calf operation. And if a fire gets into that stubble field, you guys, I'm sure, are overly aware of the Cottonwood Fire that was just a few years ago, that started less than two miles from our house off the interstate. Then, I don't know how many months after that, there was another fire that started roughly, probably around exit 113 or whatever off of the interstate that burned within a half mile of our house. And frankly, right up across the road to other property that we own. It's not uncommon to have fires and the county's own fire supervisor stated that there were 700 human caused fires as well as 90% of fires are started by humans. That's... So I don't, I guess, the county's own criteria is that it will not materially change the ability of other landowners in the area to utilize their property. This could materially change it. And unfortunately, when it does, there's no going back. Unlike the Black Hills, we can't go around the hill and find another large group of trees for protection. That's what we're concerned about, as well as obviously anyone getting hurt if they do crawl through the fence or any type of garbage. We actually own property directly south of Quinn and every spring we have to go out and pick up garbage because it blows from Quinn into our field and makes a huge mess of air cedars. Or combines for that matter.
Additional questions? Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anybody else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none.
Here. I'd like to ask Cody a question.
Go ahead.
Cody? And you know, I watch fire pits. What, what are the state regulations for fire pits out there versus like the hills? Is there a permit requirement and design, that sort of thing, that we would, or your office would use to equate properness?
COSAC environmental planner, I'm not sure if there's a difference between the state fire permit for the hills compared to anywhere else in the state. I'm not an expert on it, but I would assume that they'd have to get a permit or at least contact the wildland fire to see if a permit was required to get it. I don't believe that they actually have proposed to have any fire pits out there. Staff did add it as a condition though, that they have to get all the proper permits and then post the information for fire conditions for the day.
I agree with that. And then I saw that your condition 15 adds into that. I just, the concern I have is I don't think we have one in the county that explains a fire permit other than we support the one that's in the Black Hills National Forest. And I could see some fire concerns on that. I, I have concerns in other regards to that, especially being in a building that's metal. So... But you're not aware of any state requirements?
I'm not aware of any state requirements that would be different than what would already be required by the, by the state. If any, if anything is required out there, but like I said, staff, staff stated that they need to get the proper permits if they're going to have a fire pit.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'd want to state then, and the only ones I'm aware of or could find would be the ones in regards to the local conditions which are controlled by an entire committee. And of course, it's published every day. And that would concern me. In other words, the pit itself or whatever it could be designed is the owner, landowner saw fit or the person using it. Maybe they don't even have one there and the person that's renting could use one. And that would concern me, that there's not a true safety based design. Thank you.
So the, the planning commission could put a condition that no fire pits be allowed at all. It'd be up to the planning commission though, to make that decision.
Thanks, Cody. I appreciate that.
Go ahead, Michael.
Does Quinn have a fire department?
I believe they do, yes.
I would think they would be the ones that would be concerned on this more than anybody.
And I think that he mentioned that it was volunteer.
Yeah.
It's all volunteers.
Did you have something else, Michael?
No, that's all.
Karen?
I have a question. The access to this grain bin area, is it a dirt road? Is it a gravelled road?
It's a gravel road, like two-track trail. That's why staff and highway wanted it improved to ordinance 14 standards prior to operation or the board can request to waive it.
Because it would be a concern if people were driving across the grass.
Correct. And that's why, that's why staff requested that it be, the condition be added, that it be improved.
Further questions? Noting none. Staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU 22-15 with 17 conditions. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I would have liked to add a condition that says no fire pits. I think that's a place to start for the safety in regards to the fire. There's no question, the folks that living out there, including the owner of this site, are in a position where fire moves very quickly and there isn't a lot of help. And then those people, if they are, let's say it's not an onsite manager, they have no, what would you call it, markers to be able to tell fire people where the fire is and where they need to help immediately. So I would like to add a condition that there is no fire pits allowed.
Okay. Go ahead, Michael.
Charlie, how about fire pits? How about just no outside fires? You're talking about making hot dogs too? Well, it very well could be or some of those.
Well, it very well could be, or samosas.
I just wanted to know.
Yeah, I'm just saying that there's, just fires in general, just be none. Outside fires.
Okay, I could live with that wording. Can we develop a condition that would... Cody, can you come up with a condition that would satisfy your...
So you don't want any outside fire?
Say, that, the fire pit thing, somebody might try to get around that some way and have a fire, but not in a, and, you know, a thing. I don't know, I, to me, just say no fire, outside fires.
Staff?
It seems further straightforward, no outside fires.
So do we want to add that condition, or just change condition fifteen?
I'll move that we add a condition that includes no outside fires to the, uh, existing conditions proposed.
Are you making a motion to approve the conditional use permit with the added condition? Is that what you're doing?
No, I'm just gonna add the condition right now.
Okay.
Thank you. So it would be, we'd be changing it to, I guess it'd be number ten? Yeah, we'd be changing.
Hi, Megan Crewe with the State's Attorney's Office. I would suggest, um, replacing any of the existing, um, conditions. I believe it's ten and fifteen. Just getting rid of those conditions and replacing it with the proposed condition, because otherwise, they're gonna conflict with each other.
I agree. And my proposal would include Mike's no outside fires.
Okay.
Of any sort.
Okay. Um, so recommendation is to eliminate number fifteen, or ten and fifteen, and, uh, change it to no outside fires. Period. Is there a motion?
I'll move.
And that's just to make these changes?
Correct. Just to make the changes at this time.
Okay. Further, a motion and second to make those changes. Further discussion on those changes? Noting none. All those in favor, uh, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're still on the conditional use permit.
Okay, and I have one more question in general for Cody on that, too. Is this, um, I wasn't really sure whether this was an onsite manager by your condition. It allows for some variance. Go ahead, Cody.
So I do not believe that they're gonna have an onsite manager. Uh, if they do in the future have an onsite manager, it actually, uh, meet the criteria for a specialty resort, and they'd have to come back with a PUD overlay.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Karen.
Question to Cody. So Cody, this is a section line road, I understand. Uh, and so the distance that that would need to be proved to, um, fourteen? What's the distance, what would that be, do you?
So it, it'd be whatever they were needing to access their property. It's already existing, so it'd just be the section that they would need to, that would just be the only section that they would need to improve is down to where their approach comes off that road.
That distance is?
I'm, I'm not aware of it, no, not off the top of my head. The, the board can request, request more of it be, be done, though, that, but that, that'd be a decision the board would make at that meeting.
So there's no more entrances on that section line other than to this?
To their property, correct. I believe that they, the, there's a property to the east, but I didn't see any approaches off of it, and I believe that, I think that they own that one from my conversations with her, as well as that she owns the property to the east as well.
Further questions?
One more for Cody, I guess, if I, we don't have any building, uh, specifications or per se for a building permit, uh, in regards to how you take a grain bin and make it permanent housing, do we?
Uh, so in two thousand seventeen, when it was converted, no, we did not, but, uh, currently moving forward, when they add that additional one to it, it'll have to be international building code.
Okay, and that involves both the electrical and ventilation, then?
It involves everything having to be international building code, correct.
I could live with that more. You know, my, I, I don't like tents as permanent housing either, and I would have some difficulty with a grain bin because of the electrical and because of the venting. And the safety requirements you have to, to install, to, to make for permanent housing, fire breaks, those sort of things. Thank you, Cody.
Additional questions? Currently, um, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash fifteen. Items ten and fifteen were eliminated, and, uh, the item with no additional outside fires was added. Any motions? No motions?
Discussion, I'll, I'll move to approve.
I'll second. Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
I'm gonna voice the same concerns. When we talk about unusual living conditions, sometimes we forget about the safety factors that go into building, proper building. And I have that same difficulty with a grain bin than I have with tents, and I, I just, I can't see supporting this because, I have some concerns on the next one as well with RVs, so... I just, just can't do it. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I, I do have reservations on supporting this. I have not seen it, have not been out there, have not seen it. Uh, maybe it's different than what I'm anticipating in my mind, but I can't support this.
Okay. Further discussion?
My feeling at this point, like with a butler bin, uh, the windows, the ventilation, I mean, until we know more, I guess I'm not sure how we can okay it.
Mr. Chair, we, i- if we were to, uh, vote against the motion as it reads, it's because it's, we're filing a staff recommendation. I believe the applicant couldn't come back with another request, and Cody said there were some other options open, um, that include some additional things, certainly state involvement, uh, on the one. I guess I would like to see with, somehow add the, without prejudice, so that we're not double charging somebody that legitimately thought they have a, uh, a, a good proposal.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead, Megan.
Uh, Megan Crewe with the State's Attorney's Office. My suggestion would be instead of denying it, to just continue it if you want more information, um, because if you deny it, then the applicant will have to pay again.
Right. Thank you. Go ahead, Gary.
I'd make a substitute motion to continue, uh, this item till the next meeting.
Is there a second?
A second.
Motion and second to continue, um, to the next meeting. Jerry, can you give me that date?
It's June thirteenth.
To the June thirteenth, um, twenty twenty-two meeting. Further discussion? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item is continued. Um, item eight.
Uh, Cosec Environmental Planner, item eight is conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash sixteen, is to allow recreational vehicle, vehicle park on the subject property. The applicant landowner is Don and Troy Richter. Again, the location of the property is zero point five one miles east of Quinn City Limits and south of Highway fourteen, involves two hundred acres, uh, currently zoned agriculture district with an existing land use of agriculture, accesses off Highway fourteen, and there is special flood hazard areas, zone A. Again, we look at the same seven criteria, the answers are on the board, I'll read them aloud. Uh, number one, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general wel- welfare of the public. Uh, number two, yes, the request should out, should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Uh, number three, yes, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal or early development or improvement of the surrounding property area. Number four, yes, a private well will be the source of water, and onsite wastewater treatment system will serve the RV park and accesses off Highway fourteen. Number five, yes, access will be off Highway fourteen. Uh, number six, yes, the property is owned agriculture district, RV parks are allowed with an approved conditional use permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject properties agriculture, allowing this conditional use permit should not, should, should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. Uh, RV parks also has, have to meet section three oh six of the Pennington County zoning ordinance, uh, those are on the board as well. The only one that staff believes that the applicants do not meet is we are not sure of the, uh, lighting standards and the location of the lighting standards. So staff added a condition that they have to meet all of the requirements prior to operation. Uh, this was rather out for interdepartmental review, county highway, uh, request that the section line be improved to ordinance fourteen standards. Uh, the applicant is looking at, uh, is requesting five RV sites. The RVs will be hooked to an onsite wastewater treatment system. They will be full service, uh, West River Electric will be provided the electricity. Uh, the applicant has upgraded the onsite wastewater treatment system, and the operation of the RV park will begin, uh, this summer or next spring. Uh, staff has not received any comments or complaints from the public on this request, so staff will, is recommending approval of conditional use permit twenty-two dash sixteen with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
Cody, uh, I'm, your condition number seven, um, I think twenty-five feet's more appropriate than ten, and I believe we base, uh, if we're building, uh, in our, uh, a mobile home park, uh, we use a greater, uh, distance separation between, because of the fire capability of, uh, one unit starting and then endangering, uh, an occupied one, uh, directly alongside. But I believe twenty-five feet's a lot safer distance, and I think the fire marshal would agree with me.
Staff would be willing to accept that.
Michael.
Cody, uh, pop the satellite photo on there if you can. I've got a question on that.
The...
The one that, you know, the straight down picture?
Not, not this one?
Not this one.
No, the one that zoomed in closer to the property.
I don't know if I have that, because it was such a large property, but I can go to rapid map real fast.
Okay, the two grain bins, if you look at, uh, RV site number four and five, there's a building right by the grain bins. Where does all this go?
They, uh, they, uh, actually, she got a removal permit to remove that building. That building was no longer there.
All right, no, no question then.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair, just one more. I believe in this will probably fall under your building permits again, um, Cody. Um, to properly provide adequate electrical to an RV, you've gotta have a thirty amp or a fifty amp, uh, services. Is that listed then when they apply for the building permit?
So when they, when they apply for a building permit, what's required is you have to get a state, uh, state approval on electrical, and it has to be signed off, and then part of our final inspection is verifying that the states, uh, approved their electrical system.
Okay. The basis of my question was so that a, a fireman would know where the main panel was at, to kill the services, is what I'm suggesting.
Correct, yeah, I'd have to meet all the state, state requirements for state electrical.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Okay. Um, I had the same numbers, um, listed, um, from, uh, the Papa Sec folks. Do you have additional comments for this item? You can come forth here.
Mark Papa Sec, um, so I won't belabor the previous points, but, um, I do have a question. If, uh, for instance, the, um, no open fires, um, were attached to a conditional use permit, what would happen down the road if there were open fires? Is the conditional use permit removed?
Let Cody answer that.
Cosec Environmental Planner, if, uh, they're not meeting the conditions of the conditional use permit, it'll be brought back in front of the pl- planning commission. Uh, RV parks go in front of the board as well, so it'd be brought in front of the board, and the board and the planning commission can revoke the conditional use permits.
Okay. Um, and I don't, it wouldn't necessarily be the fault of the people asking for the conditional use permit, but I guess my concern with this is, um, on the RV site, you now are gonna have additional people, and again, to my knowledge, there's no onsite oversight of anyone who has a vested interest. And all of these people are down the road onto the next experience, while everyone else that lives locally is left to deal with problems, whatever those may be. Garbage, um, or, uh, fire, um, trespassing, for that matter. Um, we have other property where we've had people walk up and just literally cut the wires and drive their ATV through it. And that's always fun to go chase your cows and calves. So, um, for the previous reasons, criteria one, two, and seven, I still feel as though this will adversely affect those areas. Specifically, I don't see how an RV park is consistent with the eastern Pennington County's master plan. Um, and then also, we're just talking, um, additional people, um, and there's no oversight, um, on premise. So, any other questions for me?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Jim.
I, I, you know, I was dubious about, uh, I thought the neighbor was being a bit skittish about the risk here, but I, I, I have to endorse his position. I, I think the absence of anybody onsite, under the circumstances, is, is, is to me prohibitive to, uh, approving this. I mean, I think there has to be some kind of monitoring of the behavior of guests and the activities of guests, and I, to say that, you know, get on this, give me a call, and I'll come down and see what the problem is. I think we need something more immediate, under the circumstances, because I don't think most people are going to behave in such a fashion that would promote some of the disasters that the neighbor has suggested, but I share his concern against, uh, with the possibility of that. And I, this onsite absence is to me, uh, damning, in my judgment, I mean, in terms of the application. So I would oppose this, just on the strength of that.
I have a comment.
Go ahead.
This reminds me of any of you that have been out in the Forest Service campgrounds. When the Forest Service guy comes around, everything great. When he leaves, you know, let the party begin, or whatever it is. I, I mean, people are people, and, and, and they're going out to these places to have a good time. They're not, not going to church, they're going out there to have a good time, and, and that does concern me, such as what Jim said, they're very much so.
Further comments?
I have.
Chairman.
Go ahead, Gary.
I have a concern about ATVs and UTVs and side-by-sides, too, the, just, um, driving out there and cutting fences and that sort of thing, that's not good.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead.
I sure propose, and I too am, I had planned to oppose this because of onsite management. Uh, I think it's only fair to the applicant to give them time to look at this in the continuation of the other item. And, and I guess I propose to do a, a motion that says we continue this one, too, to the next meeting.
And I'd second that.
Motion and second to continue to the next meeting, which was June eleventh, thirteenth. Further discussion? You wanted to say something, Gary?
No.
No further discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item's continued. We're on item nine.
Good morning, Madison Ransom, Environmental Planner. Agenda item number nine is conditional use permit request CU twenty-two seventeen, to allow a storage facility to include storage units and an RV storage parking on the subject property. The applicants are Deanna and Michael Valone. The location is located at the end of Samus Trail, approximately point two six miles west of the intersection of Samus Trail and Healing Way. The lot size is two point four one acres. It is currently zoned... It is currently zoned highway service district, and there's no special flood hazard on the The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of the conditional permit application. They're on the screen, and I will read the findings. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Number two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. The surrounding zoning is city of Rapid City and Highway Service. Number three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes, the proposed access is off Samus Trail. Water and sewer are not needed for this requested use. A drainage plan must be submitted to the planning department prior to the middle of the building permit. Number five, yes, access is off Samus Trail. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is zoned highway service district. Storage units on the property is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Number seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is highway service district. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property is currently vacant of any structures or subject systems. The request was routed for interdepartmental review, county highway. Comments and approach warrant must be filed. Prior to the issuance of a building permit, access will be from portions of Samus Trail that is neither city nor DRT jurisdiction. This will be addressed when the applicant applies for a building permit. Rapid City Planning commented, Samus Trail is classified as a local street, requiring a minimum right-of-way width of fifty-two feet. The property is located along Highway sixteen and Entrance Quarter. This type of use is generally not supported along entrance quarters. Some other uses along the quarter within city limits have been required to provide proper screening. The future land use plan identifies this property as mixed-use commercial. To elaborate, the comprehensive plan guidance related to entrance quarters and community gateways is to encourage development that conserves views and natural features while also coordinating with the tourism industry. At minimum, the city's comprehensive plan would recommend to incorporate landscaping, coordinated signage and lighting, and other design elements to enhance positive impressions of the community. No other major concerns or comments were received. The applicant is requesting six storage units, or storage buildings and open parking areas for recreational vehicles and trailers. Staff has received no objections or concerns from the public regarding this request. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with land uses along Highway sixteen corridor. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use twenty-two seventeen with conditions.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one short one, Mr. Chair. Madison, when you reviewed this property, I see the city commented that properties of, of a normal nature like this usually have screening, and the, the county or, or staff decided that it didn't. Is it because of the elevation variance? It's kind of hard to see that piece of property anyway from, except one angle. Is that why? I see you getting suggest screening. You must have viewed it. In other words, just shoot from the hip. I, I believe there's sufficient screening because of the elevation changes along the road.
When, when I personally drove out there, I didn't believe to see any of those screenings that the city is discussing. So to enforce that on this property in the county didn't seem fair.
Okay. Thank you.
Further questions?
I have, so what you're saying is this was a recommendation by the city because this is a, a corridor, entrance corridor for the city, and they like to have the city presented well by screening out commercial, unsightly commercial developments presumably, right?
Correct.
We're not bound by that, so.
Correct. And then, like, planning commissioner Tyler Johnson said that there is, it was up on a hill on a corner. There isn't a direct, I didn't feel like there was a direct sightline onto this property that would cause...
But there's nothing up there, right?
No, currently, nothing's up there.
So when the buildings are there, will they be more conspicuous?
I'm, I'm sure you'll be able to see them from the highway like you would be able to see the other storage units about a quarter of a mile down the road toward city.
Yeah, I, I have a certain sort of impatience with storage units. I think there's so many of them. It seems like they're, they're everywhere, you know. I realize they're a necessity, that people have too much probably to keep at home, but I, I do find the idea of not kind of hiding these a little bit, if, if the cost is not significant, to be a desirable goal. But I do understand that this, they're not obligated to do this, and if they were in the, if city had sole jurisdiction here, they would be probably.
Correct.
But anyway, I just wanted to clarify what our responsibilities or powers were regarding that. Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
To help Jim out, I've actually been noticed trailers parked up there. And from the scenic byway of the highway, you can't even tell the trailers are there. My more concern was there's a house not far away, a substantial house, and that used to be a part of the Brockelsby family.
Oh, oh, yeah.
That's not, that's just slightly downhill. But as far as screening, you'd have to get off the road and, and approach, head towards apartments to see the buildings, I think, normal buildings if they go normal height for this story. Certainly, we could screen that side of it, but I don't know that you need to. It's hard to say. We've got a tower out there as well. There's a, a good-sized tower, I believe, not far from there. Thank you. I was struggling.
Oh, you're okay. I just have one comment on screening. Screening is required in our ordinance if it abuts our residential district, which this does not. There's highway service around, and actually, the city property to the north is a commercially zoned in the city. There are apartments going to the east and some paired homes on the city property. So where all of those address points are, that is an apartment building complex. That small, little rectangular sliver along Healing Way, those are going to be paired homes. But that lot to the north of this and the west of those apartments are commercial zoning in the city. So just for reference.
And the tower is down just here about the corner of the yellow, isn't it?
It's around the corner, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Additional questions for staff?
Question, site map. You want to pop that back up real quick? I've got a question.
The aerial or the site?
The, uh...
Plan.
Okay.
It's very small. I can't really read it. Where are the RVs being parked?
Um, along the south lot line, here.
With those little slots?
And along right here as well.
And that'll be all gravelled?
Correct.
Okay.
In their plan, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Additional questions? We do have a speaker request form on this. C. Paul Vinatieri.
Good morning, and thank you for the opportunity. If you put up the overhead looking down, if you could.
Madison, could you, yes, thank you.
All right, if you look at that triangle, our land is adjacent to this area, and like you mentioned, it's Brocklesby's house. You're incorrect with the idea that you cannot see, that area is going to be easily seen by Highway sixteen or Samus Trail or Moon Meadows, which goes to the apartment houses. So it's going to be seen really easy. My concerns on this, as, as I mentioned, the land to the south of there is ours, and we live, from this area, we probably live maybe fifty yards our house to this area. We're concerned about onsite managers. We're concerned about, if you look at Samus Trail, it's pronounced Samus Trail, it's a gravel road, and when you have big campers and stuff going on, it, it's going to fall apart because there's just no traffic on it from our family. And if you put a lot of additional traffic on there, it's going to fall apart. Our, another concern is, you mentioned that there's no lighting, electrical, water going to it. If you have an area like that with campers, I know personally that our storage area, people living in their campers because of their, out of their apartments, they have no place else to go. And my concern is if there's no onsite manager, who's going to eliminate them coming on the site and living in their camper? And so doing, where are they going to go to the bathroom? If they're going to have lighting, they have to have lighting on that area, that lighting will be shined on our property, our house. Another thing is the heart of that, I, I think she mentioned that it was going to be gravel. I'm concerned about runoff. There's, on the south side, there's a little canyon right there, and we're just on the other side. I'm just hoping that there's no runoff that would come into our property. So on, like the other gentleman said, I'm worried about trespass. There has to be a, a complete chain link fence all the way around it six-foot high, or people are going to come onto our property. And if you store RVs there, are they going to drive them there? Are they going to take off and go onto Samus Trail? There's a lot of concerns. I'm not aware of their plans. That's, that's the problem. If they are a good neighbor and do what their good neighbors do, I have no problem with it, but they have no manager out there, and they don't have good security out there. No water for bathrooms. There's a lot of other things that I'm not aware of. Security is probably one of the most important things in my book. But like I mentioned, we're just adjacent to it. Our house from that land is probably, oh, twenty-five to fifty yards at the most. And I'm wondering, if you put that overhead on, I'll show you where our lane is. Right there. If you look on the left side, that is our lane that goes to our house. Are they going to enter this storage area from our lane, or are they coming in from Samus Trail? Okay, they're going to come on, off of Samus Trail. From that entry right there is, oh, I would say maybe twenty yards to our lane. I don't know. I just, I, I wish I had more information on their plans and everything, but if they don't secure that area, if they don't have water for latrines, the lighting, is it going to be another concern? And there'd be debris and that kind of stuff off that area, but those are my concerns. And you can see it from Highway sixteen. There's no way of entering this off of Samus Trail. That approach has been eliminated when they put in the apartment houses. So to get to this area, you have to come off of Moon Meadows, go a quarter of a mile, hit Healing Way and go about two blocks, and then come back on Samus Trail to it. So you're making a lot of area, and if you're having these people coming in, you have probably about, I would say, maybe five or six hundred people living in those apartment houses, and you're just doubling the traffic going through there. Just those ideas, I'm, I hope that you consider that when you do approve or not approve. Thank you. You have any questions for me?
Questions for the speaker?
Just one.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Were you aware that your house is sitting in, according to the zoning, the same zoning as this?
Yes.
Okay. Just wanted to know.
It's, everybody used to call it the pink palace.
Correct.
It's not the pink palace anymore. It's white.
That's right.
But I hope that if you approve this, that they do some stuff to minimize input on us. Like I mentioned, they have big lights, they'll be shining on our area, and if they don't put up that six-foot-high fence and just the traffic through there, and the gravel road that goes to this approach will be torn up, I guarantee it. Because there's only two cars that use it right now.
Just to answer your one question about, they, they do have to, when they disturb more than ten thousand square feet, they do have to have drainage plants and that sort of thing.
Good, 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 good. And like I mentioned, from Highway sixteen, you're going to see it very easily. Any other questions for me?
No. Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Madison, I have a, I have a question. I, I looked at the plan, and I saw the dotted line going around this. Can you answer if they are planning to fence this or not fence this?
Yes, they are planning to fence it.
With a, what kind of fence?
I'm, I'm assuming a chain link, but I...
Okay.
They're in the audience.
Are you the applicant, sir? Okay, come on up.
Michael Valone, part owner of this lane is my wife. To address everyone's concerns, we are looking at putting a six-foot fence on there with barbed wire along the top. We will have security as well as gate access codes, and we do plan on landscaping because we understand it is a disturbance and can be seen that way. So we will be doing landscaping as well as trees, because we own the property just to the south as well. So I guess hopefully that answers people's concerns. And as far as, not to throw your distance off, but his house is close, but it's more like two-hundred yards further down his private driveway there.
Thank you for answering the questions. Any questions for the applicant?
Yes, I do.
Go ahead, Michael.
Are you going to have an office in this?
We won't be having an office per se on this grounds here. We're doing some off-site security. We will be monitoring, but in the future, we would like to put a, like an off-site facility down below. We're looking at doing like a storage shop, and we will have, I will be there for most of the day on those off-days that I'm not working, and we will be monitoring if anybody needs anything.
How far away do you live if somebody punches the button and needs some help?
Currently, we live on the north side of town.
Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Thank you.
Does anyone else wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty-two dash seventeen with thirteen conditions. Is there a motion?
I'd say move.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item ten.
Agenda item number ten is conditional use permit request CU twenty-two dash nineteen to allow accessory dwelling unit in a proposed garage. Applicant is Stephen and Janaya Bell. The location is two-four-two-seven-five Medicine Mountain Road. The lot size is twenty-two-point-seven-five acres. It is currently zoned agriculture district, and there's no special flood hazard on the Zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in their review of the conditional use permit applications. They're on the screen, now read the findings. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Two, no, the requested use should not substantially impair, diminish the uses, values, or enjoyment of other properties in the neighborhood for purposes already permitted. Three, no, the requested use should not impede the normal or early development and improvement of the surrounding property for uses permitted in the district. Four, yes, an address will be assigned for the EDU and posted in accordance with Pennington County ordinance number twenty, access is off of US Service Road. Five, yes, the existing approach will provide ingress and egress as to minimize traffic congestion on Medicine Mountain Road. Accessory dwelling unit will utilize the same driveway approach as the primary dwelling. Six, yes, the current zoning district is agriculture district. The requested use will conform to all applicable regulations of the district if this conditional use permit is approved. Seven, yes, future land use is identified as Rancheck Residential District, or, or, excuse me, Rancheck District. This requested use is consistent within this district with an approved conditional use Currently on the property, there is a single-family residence, a carport, and there was a deck addition later on, as well as a onsite wastewater treatment system with an expired operating permit. with an expired um operating permit. This was um routed for interdepartmental review. County planning commented the current operating permit is expired. The applicant will need to have the system pumped and observed by a certified pumper prior to obtaining a building permit. Staff's comment is that this will be addressed at the time of application of the building permit. County highway commented access will be from Forest Service and access easement should be unfiled across parcel one five nine four nine. Staff has addressed this as a condition of approval. The applicant is proposing to buil- build a garage with living quarters on the property to be used in, as an accessory dwelling unit. Staff has received no objections or concerns regarding this request. Staff finds no significant issues with the applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with land uses in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit twenty-two dash nineteen with conditions.
Questions for staff on this?
Is the Forest Service easement folded down? There's a lot of should've, would've, maybe, and all that. Is it for sure?
There is a current um access easement with the Forest Service. Um, I believe it is under the um previous owner and the Forest Service is working with the applicant to get it changed over to the current owner's name.
So it's an active thing at this point?
Correct.
Okay, alright.
Further questions? Charlie?
Help me out, Madison. And, and it could be something that's improved since a long time ago when I served. It used to be that you couldn't build another second whole house and rent it out on your same piece of property. But now we allow it if it's called an accessory dwelling unit and it's only seven hundred feet.
Correct, and long-term renting only, not short-term rental.
Yes, it has to be uh in excess of the twenty-eight-day state requirement.
Correct.
Thank you.
Additional questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit twenty, CU twenty-two dash nineteen with eighteen conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item eleven.
Agenda item number eleven is conditional use permit request CU twenty-two dash twenty-one to allow an accessory structure, a garage, as a primary structure on the subject property. The applicant is Carl Nancy Hellickson. The location is near the intersection of Old Hill City Road and Mills Ranch Road. The lot size is five point three four acres. It's currently zoned Rancheck District. There's no special flood hazard on the property. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of the conditional use permit applications. They are on the screen now, read the findings. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, general welfare, general welfare of the public. Number two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Garage is a residential use which conforms with residential uses in the area. Three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement in any surrounding property in the area. Four, yes, access is off Mills Ranch Road. Five, yes, the requested use should not significantly impact traffic congestion. Six, yes, the property is owned Rancheck District and accessory structure as a primary use is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Seven, yes, the future land use of the subject property is Rancheck District. Allowing this conditional use permit is consistent with the comprehensive plan. The property is currently vacant, many structures are onsite wastewater treatment systems. This was routed for interdepartmental review. There were no major comments or concerns received. The applicant plans to build a garage prior to building the single-family residence on the property. Staff has received no objections or concerns regarding this request. Staff finds no significant issues with applicant's request as it appears to be in harmony with land uses in the area. Therefore, staff is recommending approval of CU twenty-two dash twenty-one with conditions.
Questions for staff on this one?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
You go.
I was just going to make a comment. This, this is just down the road from us. I'm very familiar with this and, and I can see no problem with this.
Okay, Charlie?
That was my, I, I looked at the overhead, the rapid map picture and Mills Road, and I noticed it was a road district area. Has that been developed since that picture? I can't even see road under where it says Mills Ranch Road.
Yes, it has that road on that picture right there.
Thank you.
Additional questions for staff? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, all those, uh, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash two-one with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
I'd move approval of CU twenty-two dash two-one with conditions.
Motion in second, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, no. Motion carries, item twelve.
Good morning, Commissioner Chuti Masabun, a planner. Um, conditional use permit, I, um, sorry, one second. Conditional use permit CU twenty-two eighteen is to allow a vacation home rental on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is air and A and B cabins at L C. The applicants are on Zoom today if you have any question for them. The location is at one two seven two seven North Perry Creek Road. The current zoning of the property is rural residential district. The zoning ordinance lists seven criteria that the planning commission may consider in the review of conditional use permit applications. They are as follow, and I will read the finding. Criteria one, no, a vacation home rental takes place entirely within an existing residence. The requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public. Criteria two, no, a vacation home rental is considered a residential use. The requested use should not change the residential use of the property or have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Criteria three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Criteria four, yes, all, all necessary utilities are in place. Criteria five, yes, access is off of North Perry Creek Road via an existing approach. The requested use should not significantly affect the traffic congestion. Criteria six, yes, the property is zone rural residential district and a, and approved conditional use permit is required to operate the vacation home rental in this zoning district. Criteria seven, yes, the future land use is rural residential district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The property consists of, of single-family residence and a cabin. The applicant recently upgraded the existing onsite wastewater treatment system. The request was routed for an interdepartmental review. Emergency service nine one one and county, and county addressing coordinator made a comment regarding the address. And the applicant's already um posted address at the um, on the, on the property and at the driveway split between um, the otherwise mountain road and the North Perry Creek Road. And no significant concerns or objection were received from other department. The applicant submitted the required documents, um, of the zo- um, Pennington Housing Zoning Ordinance Section three nineteen. Staff performed a site visit. At the time of writing the staff report, staff found that there is also a cabin on the subject property, which is located in the, in the back of this, this house right here. Staff spoke, spoke with the applicants regarding the cabin. They stated that it is being used as a storage and it is not being rented or used as a residence. The applicant obtained a removal permit to remove living quarters from the cabin to convert it to a storage. And staff, and the applicants are working on the cabin. And they sent staff's uh picture of what they are removing the living quarter there. Uh, staff has not received any complaints or concerns regarding the requested use on, or the subject property. Staff recommends approval of this condition, of this condition use, I'm sorry, this conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash eighteen with eighteen conditions, with the change of condition nine to read. That the applicant maintains an evacuation emergency, emergencies plan to provide copies to all overnight guests in case there is a need to evacuate guests from the property and that the copy of site plan be kept on file at the planning department. The condition nine, it was from the previous um conditional use permit.
Question for staff?
Question.
Go ahead.
How many vacation home rental units are in this area? And are, do you have any idea?
No, I don't, I'm sorry.
This is Adalway's?
Yes.
A lot.
That's, I was going to say.
I can tell you from the.
It seemed to me that we've already been through some of this before in the other ones.
A significant number.
Yes.
Okay, but nobody has squawked at this point?
No, yeah, that area is, has many vacation home rental.
Mike?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just a comment, when Adalway's was originally done by the original developer, uh, it was all spelled out about the vacation home rentals being allowed within the, those properties.
Okay. Questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Uh, the applicants are on Zoom. I'm, I'm assuming you guys are there to answer questions, or is there anything that you guys would like to add?
No, we're just here for questions.
Noted. With that, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash eighteen with eighteen conditions, noting that number nine is rewritten to what you indicated. Is there a motion?
I'll move with that, just one.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries, item thirteen.
Item thirteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash twenty. The applicants and landowner are Sean and Kelly Doll. They are in the audience today if you have any question. The location is located approximately half a mile east of the intersection of one hundred and sixty-first Avenue and two hundred and twenty-sixth Street. Lot size is eighty acres and the current zoning district is agriculture district. The zoning ordinance lists seven criterias that the planning commission may consider in the review of conditional use permit application, and they are as follow. Criteria one, no, allowing this conditional use permit should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public, especially considering the temporally nature of the applicant's request. Criteria two, no, the requested use should not have any long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of other properties in the immediate vicinity. Staff cannot predict the effect on the property value in the neighborhood. Criteria three, allow it, no, allowing this conditional use permit should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of any surrounding property in the area. Considering the temporally nature of the applicant's request, the requested use is not intended to be a permanent use. Criteria four, the RV contains water storage and the unit, uh, in the unit. The applicants have a generator um for the power. The, the property is currently vacant. The applicant's plan to use Love Truck Stop to dump the wastewater. However, after discussion um with the planning staff member, an onsite wastewater treatment system is required to be installed and approved by the planning, Pennington County Environmental Planner prior to the RV being utilized as a temporarily living quarters. And staff include this as a condition of approval. Criteria five, the access is all of two twenty-sixth um street. An approach permit is required per the county highway department's comment. Criteria six, the property is zone agriculture district. Temporally use is allowed with an approved conditional use permit. Criteria seven, the future land use of the subject property is agriculture district. Allowing this conditional use permit should be consistent with the current comprehensive plan. The requested use was, the request was routed for an interdepartmental review. The county highway made a comment about the approach permit. The county addressing coordinator made a comment regarding the site plan showing um a location of the RV and the address be posted properly. On May twelve, twenty twenty-two, staff performed a site visit and the, and found that there are three RVs on the subject property. Staff verified with the applicant regarding the number on the RV on the subject property. And the applicant ensured that only one RV will be utilized as a temporary living quarters. Uh, staff recommend approval of CU twenty-two dash twenty with twelve conditions.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Just one, when I was floating around here, I lost my number. Because of our condition number four, which I agree with, I believe we've got to modify the condition number six to go that within thirty days of the approval of this conditional use permit comma, prior to utilization and prior to utilization of the site, the applicants will provide a site plan. We are requiring them to do the um septic prior to, and I think we, we've got to tie the location of the, the RV to that as well. It's a be uniform.
Can you repeat the condition?
I just put, I added it to your condition rather than changing. I just put at the end of the conditional use permit comma, and prior to utilization of the site, comma, and then to be consistent.
Thank you.
Further questions for staff?
One, so you've got a couple of uh RVs stored out there now and they're allowed to be out there as long as people aren't living in them. What's to say you can't have twenty out there? And, and may, may collect a fee, ten dollars a month?
Well, that will consider an RV park, which is required conditional use permit, a separate conditional use permit. Um, when staff spoke with the applicant, that is not their intent. And actually, they are here in the audience if you have any question for, for them. But yeah, that is for personal use as of right now. But if they want to change their use to be an RV park, they can come back and apply for a conditional use permit for that.
Well, I wasn't thinking of somebody living in them. I was just thinking of just being stored.
Yep, it will be a storage unit then. It's kind of like an RV storage park instead of RV park, which is required a conditional use permit also.
Alright.
Questions? Okay, um, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, um, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash twenty. There were twelve conditions noting the addition of the text to item six by Charlie. Be where we're at. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries, we're on item fourteen.
Uh, Cody, second for our planner. Item fourteen is conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash twenty-two is to allow a home occupation and contracting business on the subject property. The applicant is Josh London. Uh, the landowner is William in Peggy, Napoli. Location of the property is three two five one Pioneer Drive. Involves one acre. Current zoning is suburban residential district with an existing land use residential. Access is off Pioneer Drive and there is special flood hazard area on the property. The floodway and the five-hundred-year floodplain are located on the property. When approving conditional use permits, the planning commission may consider the seven criteria. Uh, the answers are on the board, I'll read them aloud. Number one, no, the requested use should not be detrimental or endanger the public health, safety, or general welfare of the public considering home occupations take place entirely within a structure on the property. Number two, no, the conditional use permit should not change the residential use of the property unless it have no long-term negative effects on the use and enjoyment of the properties in the immediate vicinity. Number three, no, the requested use should not affect the normal orderly development or improvement of the surrounding property in the area. Uh number four, yes, access is off Pioneer Drive and the property is served by public utilities. Number five, yes, the requested use should not impact traffic congestion. Number six, yes, the property is on suburban residential district. Home occupations are allowed in the district with an approved conditional use permit. And number seven, yes, the future land use of the property is suburban residential district, which allows for a single-family residence as a primary use. Home occupations are secondary use that is allowed through a conditional use permit. Uh currently on the property, there is a twenty-four by forty-one manufactured home, a garage with a lean-to and two storage warehouses. Uh that onsite wastewater treatment system, it's served by public water and public sewer. Uh ma- on May sixteen twenty-two, staff performed a site visit. Uh the pictures are on the screen. Uh the applicant's intent is to store painting supplies, tools, vehicles, and equipment in the two warehouses on the subject property. The applicant also plans to conduct finish work within the warehouses to support off-site work. The single-family residents in the warehouse are you, and one warehouse is located within the uh boundaries of the FEMA designated floodway. Any improvements must be permitted through planning and zoning. And one of the warehouses located outside the floodway, but within the five hundred year floodplain. Uh staff has not received any uh complaints regarding this request, so staff is recommending approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash twenty-two with conditions.
Go ahead, Michael.
Cody, a long time ago when I was really hungry, I used to do a lot of paint contracting. Uh this outline for conditional application that that these people have provided says the materials we use are water-based materials. I know with the VOC requirements and all that latex is coming on, but most contractors that do painting still dibble in oil. Uh I have no idea if if you people are out here, do you have anything, do you have anything to do with oil paints?
Um very seldomly.
If you'd come forward and.
I'm Josh Lundin. I'm the applicant. Um yeah, we do very seldomly, the stains that we use are oil. Um but we do hand apply all our stain stuff just to keep the particulate out of the air. So um that can be if you are working in solvent-based materials a lot.
Right.
It can become an issue, but that's the whole reason behind us using water-based clear coats and finishes is because we know the dangers in using these solvent-based materials. They're very flammable. Um you have, every year you have cabinet shops or something like that that comes up that aren't properly ventilated using solvent-based materials and there's issues. So that's why we've made the switch to water-based.
Which I understand and and don't get me wrong. I I that's a far better deal normally. However, in some cases, oil is the only way to go on something. And then this comes back to where are you storing it? If you're gonna store it in this warehouse, you're talking a different ballgame than water-based.
Yeah, yep. So when you do store it, you do have to, even in the cleaning materials that you'd use any of the solvents for that, you have to have flammable cabinets and you have to make sure that it's all stored properly.
So do we need any thing specifically on hazardous?
If if the planning commission wishes, they can add a condition that all hazardous material will be stored uh in proper storage. I guess I'm not sure, familiar with the word words, but the planning commission would definitely have that condition.
Yeah. I I and I'm not familiar with it either. I I've never dealt with this in a warehouse situation, but I do, like you say, things go boom. They definitely do.
Yep, yep. It's it's similar. I mean, we obviously deal with it in a little greater quantities, but I think if you walk into anybody's garage, they have paint thinner in their garage and they have gasoline and stuff like that as well. So we just try to take the proper precautions when we're storing, cause we might, instead of having a gallon of it, we'll have a fa- five-gallon bucket of it or something like that instead.
I guess my question is, at this point, would the the uh fire department or anybody have a a different view on a warehouse out there with flammable compounds in it?
That I'm not sure of. I believe it was routed to uh the county fire administrator and I don't believe.
He would, but but at that point, nothing was said about hazardous materials. They were talking water-based.
So you can, the planning commission can add a condition that would state that ha- that all hazardous and flammable materials be stored uh as required by, I believe that'd be Rapid Valley Fire uh depart- department would respond to that.
Mister Chair. Go ahead, Charlie.
Haven't, Larry, some of this is referred to and and I'm sure the applicant knows this, on the MSDS forms in regards to uh not only applying it but storing it uh properly. And you're gonna have a great variance in materials. You may even have some water-based ones that have special uh storage requirements.
Yeah, every, actually, every product we use, we have to keep an MSDS sheet on um in a binder, basically.
And they're required to meet those things. I think, I guess, in this particular case where he's attempting to switch to the majority use, let's call it, a substantial majority use is water-based. I think he's gonna have to still meet his requirements on his MSDS for those that are oil-based and I and I'm comfortable with that. There, uh many times you have a number inspectors that can ask for your MSDS log. Is that not?
Absolutely. Uh based on our leases that we've held for the last ten years. Um I mean, we're looking at purchasing the property here, but based on our leases, we've always had to funnel that stuff in our industrial rentals that we've had, so.
I guess what I'm trying to say is I'm more comfortable than maybe you would be because of those directions and and knowing that he's gotta meet them and they call them up on the job site. There's a number of things that they get reviewed about during their normal work processes.
Well, and he would also have an insurance company that would come out and inspect too.
That's another one.
Yeah.
Yeah, very much so. Well, every, we have an audit every year.
Yeah, okay. I I that's good enough for me at this point.
Mister Chair, just for clerical, uh and we should change the reference. This is item fourteen and it's listed as fifteen uh numerous times in there. Just for the record, this is item fourteen.
That's correct. I had that noted in the agenda packet as well. Thank you. Further questions for staff or the applicant? Thank you, sir. Does anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. And just to confirm, Michael, you didn't want to add any additional conditions?
At this point, I I would say no. I think you're just monkey up the works a little bit, so we'll leave it as is.
Okay, staff recommends approval of conditional use permit CU twenty-two dash two-two with eleven conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item fifteen.
Item fifteen is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash twelve. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from ranch act to low-density residential district. The applicant is Mary Dietrich. The agent is Howie Land Surveying Jeff Howe. Location of the property is at one three three eight zero Greyhound Gulch Road. It involves four point nine acres. Uh current zoning is agriculture district with an with a mixed use land use. Access is off Greyhound Gulch Road and there's no special flood hazard area on the property. Uh staff is recommending to continue comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash twelve to the June thirteenth twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting. Uh the applicant's agent couldn't be here today and there's uh, the property has a conditional use permit that allows certain uses specifically in agriculture districts, so rezoning uh can create some issues with it and staff wanted time to meet with the applicant to go over the those issues before this was heard.
Staff's recommending to continue comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash twelve to the June thirteenth twenty-two planning commission meeting. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to continue for the discussion.
Just one item. Uh Cody, I'd have a lot of questions when this comes up. There's a lot of buildings on that property.
Correct, and that's.
I have some questions of, you know, in regards to both of these requests in that regard. Is that the conditional use permit or something?
Yes, this is Dallas Dietrich's property. Do you remember? He had this conditional use permit. He has a camp out there.
Right.
So. And that was the concern that by rezoning it, that the underlying zoning district now wouldn't need that conditional use permit because there's a a camp um out there. So we wanted to meet with the applicant and the agent first to discuss some options.
Understood. So you so you're gonna have a lot to tell me about all the buildings and where this all fits.
Yes.
Based upon some future.
It's part of the conditional use, yes.
Further discussion on the continuation. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item sixteen.
Uh Cody Sac, environmental planner. Item sixteen is rezone RZ twenty-two dash thirteen. It is to rezone four point nine acres from agriculture district to low-density residential district. The applicant is Mary Dietrich. Again, that agent is Howie Land Surveying Jeff Howe. Property is one three three eight zero Greyhound Gulch Road. Uh staff is recommending to continue rezone RZ twenty-two twenty-two dash thirteen to the June thirteenth twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting for the same reasons as an an item uh fifteen.
Questions for staff?
Moved to approve.
Second.
Motion and second uh to approve the continuation of rezone RZ twenty-two dash thirteen to June thirteenth twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting, further discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item seventeen.
Item seventeen is comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash ten. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from low-density residential district to commercial district. The applicant is Lowell Fletcher. The owner is Harley Moore. The agent is DC Scott Surveyors. Location of the property is six zero five one Green Valley Drive. It involves one point one zero acres. Uh current zoning is agriculture district with an existing use of agriculture. Access is off Green Valley Drive and there is a special flood hazard area on the property, the floodway. Uh current zoning within one-half mile is there's agricultural district. Plan unit development, which is in the blue, and suburban residential district, which is in the brown. And future uh land use is low-density residential, suburban residential and plan unit development. Uh most of the land uses in the area are residential or agriculture. This was routed around for interdepartmental review. Uh the city of Rapid City stated that the subject property is along Green Valley Drive. A proposed collector, which requires a minimum right-of-way of sixty-eight feet. The future land use plan designates appropriate use to the property as agriculture, being that the subject property is located in the floodway. There is a future greenway slash floodplain conserv- conservation overlay on the on the property. As such, the city's comprehensive plan does not support the proposed use or rezone. Uh county highway uh has no comment as an approach permit is on file. There, the county floodplain manager, uh the entire subject property is located within the FEMA-regulated floodway. There is a floodplain development permit FP eighteen dash zero nine on file with the planning and zoning office uh to allow a non-commercial agriculture structure on the subject property. The applicant is proposing to use utilize an existing agriculture structure for a commercial computerized embroidery business. Again, the property is located within the FEMA-regulated floodway. The base flood elevation for the existing agriculture structure is three thousand uh forty-eight feet and finished elevation is three thousand five hundred or three thousand fifty and a half. Uh the applicant will need to work with the South Dakota Department of Agriculture and Natural Resources and Pennington County to give a to gain approval of holding tanks as a mean for onsite wastewater treatment for the commercial use. Uh surrounding existing land uses within a half-mile are agriculture and residential and future land use is within a half-mile is residential. The closest commercial zone property is um one and a quarter miles away. The request does not appear to be in harmony with existing land uses over the county comprehensive plan due to twenty forty. So with that, staff is recommending denial of comprehensive plan amendment on the CA twenty-two dash ten.
Questions for staff? What is uh, what do they do um on the PUD properties immediately to the north of this?
I believe it is agriculture, or not agriculture. I believe it's residential use. I'm not one hundred percent sure. I'm sorry.
My next question is, is that the, so the entire is, it it's in the FEMA floodway. Um and then we have a floodplain development permit on file with the planning and zoning to allow non-commercial agricultural structure on the subject property. Um what, what are the specific changes that would need to be made to have a commercial property in the floodway? Are are there different building designs, floodproofing, that kind of stuff?
There are different, yes, there are different things that uh can be done with it, but the base flood elevation for the property shows that it's actually above the base flood elevation. So they'd either have to build to above the base flood elevation or floodproof it to the base flood elevation, which I believe that that structure already has.
And then my next question is, is did, is this just going to be kind of like a manufacturing location or is there, is would there need to be parking and is this gonna be like a retail front?
That, uh honestly, that'd be a question that maybe the applicants would have to answer. Uh this was a different uh planner's uh staff report. I'm just filling in for him. And I'm not super familiar on all the specifics of the embroidery business.
Right, thank you. Any other questions for staff? Noting none, I I do have a speaker request form um from Loretta Jangula, Jangula? Hopefully I said that right.
Yes, Jangula. Thank you. Um we live, uh this property is located along Green Valley Road, which is right to the north of Rapid Crick. And between Green Valley Road and Rapid Crick lies this parcel of land where that building is located. Uh we know that it's in a flood area approximately, maybe the spring of nineteen or twenty. We had a lot of rain over Memorial Day weekend and the crick flooded and it completely went totally flooded this piece of pasture land, went across Green Valley Road into the neighbors to the north. Cause Green Valley subdivision is is totally residential. There's no commercial in there now. And this property lies along the south side of Green Valley Road, which is agricultural land. We did see trucks coming in and building up a pad and and we tried to figure out what was going on here uh probably one to two years ago. And all of a sudden, the cement trucks came and pretty soon a building came was being constructed. So my husband went over there and asked and they said, well, um I think he's building the horse barn. Well, when the building got finished, there was a roll-up door in the back. There was a walk-in door on one side and windows on there. And then later on, we see that the electricians are out there and where they have those green utility things, there's a post coming up and apparently he had electricity installed there, but still nobody's ever there's, that building's been set in vaca. And so a couple of weeks ago then, we received the letter that they're applying for to be, have this property zone commercial. Directly across the street on Green Valley Road, there is a parcel of land that is going to be developed into residential again because Green Valley is strictly residential. And by having and allowing, there's no water to that property. All the water that we get in Green Valley is strictly domestic residential use only, no commercial. And so um if he has to get water there, I don't know where he's gonna get it. And I would guess for, if he's gonna put something in there, he's gonna need some water and and sewer. So um we strongly, you know, like I said, there's, this is strictly residential. And to bring a piece of commercial business in here now, what's to prevent down the road from bringing more commercial into this area, which is a residential, quiet residential neighborhood? And once you open those gates to rezoning commercial, you're gonna have more of that coming in because one gets in, then some more get in. And I just don't think it would be good. There's school buses going, there's children, they pick up children. I don't think we need commercial property in the neighborhood on our back, on our front doorstep, basically. And um so my contention is I strongly advise against rezoning this property to commercial. Thank you. Do you have any questions?
Questions for the speaker? Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Cody.
Uh Cody Sac, environmental planner. So one thing to consider is that green, again, Green Valley Drive is a collector street. Uh commercial is better suited along arterials for infrastructure purposes.
Thank you.
Mister Chair, just a question for Cody. Is there a site visit analysis available on this yet? Uh just following up on some of the comments by the speaker.
Sorry, can you say that again?
Site visit analysis that we normally see. Site visit analysis that we normally see.
So I believe Jason went out and did a site visit on it. Uh, that's where these pictures come from. I'm not one hundred percent sure what he he found besides uh the area is a residential and agriculture use.
Okay, I what I'm thinking of is in regards to building permit, the electric and whether anything else has been done in the the building.
That I'm not sure. I don't think we've ever been in the building.
Right. I I noticed it wasn't in there and it usually is. We see when the building permit and what it was included in that building permit, if it's in the site visit. And that's what I was thinking uh should be available to us, especially based upon a a speaker uh comment. Thank you.
Additional questions for staff? There was one.
Charlie asked my question.
Charlie asked your question. Okay, I have another speaker request form here and then I did see your hand, ma'am. I'll I'll get to you, but let's go to Richard uh Sturkle. What what was it?
Rich Sturkle.
Sturkle, yeah.
Sturkle. Uh, if you see uh see this picture right here and you seen Green Valley right there. I own the property on the other side of the road and that's the one that you guys are we rezoned with you guys and we did all that and that's getting ready for development. But um and there's gonna be eight lots on there, okay? Uh, with access to Green Valley Road there. Uh, that building is directly across from, you know, two or three of those lots and their access going on to Green Valley. When I first applied for the rezone and we got the uh, uh, you know, all the people commented in the county was was thinking about how much more traffic I would add, you know, by signing eight lots there. Uh, so I don't know uh how much more uh traffic that will add. But I assume it's gonna have to have parking places and all that. That's commercial. It's gonna have to be made up pretty nicely, uh, I guess, you know? I've been inside that building several times. It's just a open building from one end to the other. There's nothing in there right now. The uh, the picture that showed that on the other side, there's no windows on the roadside on Green Valley. But on the other side, they kind of made that a little bit nicer, cause I, when Harley and I first talked about what was happening there, he was gonna store all his uh equipment there because he farms and, you know, he does things. There's not from here, it's from Brookings, but he used to come down to do that, so. Them turning it commercial and everything, I don't think that when he built it was intended for that. So I don't know, uh, the poor folks that wanted to develop, how much they had to get, you know, all the stuff they got to do, but it's gonna be a lot and and like uh my good neighbor says that, you know, we've always been uh uh suburban out there. It's real nice and Green Valley is the major thoroughfare they're there. So whatever happens, we're still adding more to that particular road. Thank you, guys.
Since you've been inside that, does that have a poured floor at all or is it all grab?
It's a poured floor, uh, and very nice. It's two by four constructed walls, everything. It was just a big open building to store stuff and when when I first talked to him, so.
Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Any additional questions for Cody? Okay, um, ma'am, I think that you wanted to come back up and then I did catch your answer.
Thank you, I'm sorry. But I was, I did visit with Jason and the planning commission. Um, and he said he was gonna go out there and inspect it. He did also inform me at that time that the request has been made to duplicate the size of that building, either by adding on to it or an additional structure. So uh, like I said, we have no idea what his plans are, what they're gonna be, but it's very, very I just don't think it's a good plan and really hate to see commercial coming into that residential area. That's been really a nice, quiet, peaceful place to live and more residential housing going in right across the street from it. Thank you.
Thank you. Sir, if you want to come up? Go ahead and state your name for the record.
Lowell Fleeger. I'm the applicant. The, this is my wife Tammy. We own Black Hills Embroidery, currently located on seven oh five East Watertown Street. Um, our commercial embroidery business involves medium commercial sized embroidery machines. We also offer silk screening and uh, but we do not do that onsite. We uh farm that out at this point and have for a number of years. We've been in business for thirty thirty-six years. Uh, we currently vend Black Hills Stock Show as the official vendor. We do the National Little Bridges Rodeo Association. We vend FFA. South Dakota High School Rodeo Association, Four-Eight Rodeo Association. We're looking to downsize our business somewhat, getting close to retirement. We also live just about a half mile south of this property, where we currently have an acreage also there. So we're looking at this piece as a convenience. Our business is quiet. We don't have any intention of having um, any large customer base that drives in and out. Um, most of the stuff that we do other than vending are for commercial uh businesses here in town. Um, for example, we do uh quite a bit of product for like Moil, Common Sense. So we don't have a lot of retail drive in and out of business. Don't have any intention of doing anything that's loud, out of the ordinary or, you know, anybody's welcome to come and see our business where it's currently located. Take a look at the inside of our business, how we operate, so forth and so on. So.
Um, the property is currently owned by my mom and stepdad. And so when we wanted to downsize and get a little bit more out of the commercial area and the location of town that we're in, um, they visited with us about this being a possibility. Um, and that's when we had looked for a few other places to try to relocate, but real estate in Rapid City is expensive right now and with us wanting to move more towards retirement. We do have some, these vending um events that we do, we do have contracts with them for three to five years. Um, so again, we're there. Right now, even being in the middle of Rapid City, we have very little traffic. We don't have walk-in business. Um, all of our clients are chosen. We don't take newer clients at this point. Um, so it's just maintaining the clients that we have and we're just wanting to try to find a little quieter environment. Um, we are a family-owned business. Our two daughters help us part-time. Um, the addition that she spoke of was we have a vending trailer um that we take to these events and we were wanting to have a place to be able to store our vending trailer. Um, so that it's out of the elements and a little easier to load and unload, having a place to do that. Um.
As she refers to the vending trailer, that's the addition that we're looking at putting on to it. It'd be a pole barn type structure of about the same dimension that would store the product that we use for these different vending situations. And then would also include a a place to be able to put our trailer into out of the weather. That's what the addition is that we're currently looking at. That would, that's what it would be used for. The current building would be finished on the inside to include offices and then a place to put our machines.
And we have one six-head embroidery machine and heat press equipment is what we use when we're onsite at these events to apply the image to the garments. So it's not a ton of equipment either, so it's just.
Questions for the applicants?
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Ken.
Um, approximately, how often do you take in supply deliveries and then ship out product? Is it big trucks? Is it um?
It varies.
UPS and FedEx.
UPS and FedEx is what we use and as we, it, when we get closer to a large event, there'll be a little bit more of that, but um again, we have six major events and then just taking care of our routine best clients at this point. And we work with Crazy Horse and you know, some of those that we do large volume and that's where it would just be more of a production. We don't have the need for people traveling in and out other than us doing our production.
Some days I think Amazon deliveries.
I can tell you that my concern with uh making it commercial wouldn't be what you guys are describing. Um, when property typically goes from what it's currently zoned in into a more uh, I'll call it allowable zoning classification. It's not necessarily what you guys are doing. It it would be what what happens to that in ten years? What happens to that in twenty years? And so that's what I'm looking at. I certainly sympathize with your um, with your thoughts on convenience. It doesn't sound like you have necessarily a storefront per se where you have business coming in and out, but um, I I can't be supportive of it for the future reasons. I think what you guys are trying to do is, it sounds, it sounds very reasonable. I just um, my my, I I'm concerned about what would happen in the future. So um, I, one of the questions that I had was uh was for staff was um, i- is there a way, I I mean, it sounds to, we we have some home occupations that would be similar to this uh, in in nature. Is there, are there alternate avenues for those types of things?
Uh, Cosec Environmental Planner, uh, a home occupation, there'd have to be a home on the property. And I don't believe that they live on the property.
Right.
Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Um, I kind of support what you're saying too. What about a conditional use permit with a drop dead on it? It's agriculture would uh, it's it's a commercial on agriculture. Is that something that's not possible?
Brittany Muller, Planning Director, Jason and I did talk about this um at the conditional use permit process. But it didn't fit in either of the neighborhood commercials or the home occupation areas. So that that's usually typically the two that we um look at.
Can't you have a a wholesale business, commercial? That's what they're doing, basically. Wholesale business, commercial on agriculture. This isn't a retail.
Right. So typically our CUPs fall into one of those two categories, a neighborhood commercial or a home occupation and it didn't, it doesn't mean either of those.
Would this, would the department go with uh denial without prejudice so that we could look at other possibilities for these folks? Is that something that, uh, in other words, another meeting with them and maybe it could be fit into something. I was just thinking a conditional use permit and here comes, I got problems.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So as Brittany was saying, this does not fit in either of our allowable um, businesses in a residential area uh or even in an agricultural area. So the only way that we could allow it is by amending our ordinance, which would allow anybody within the entire county to do the same thing. Even though their situation may not have that much of an effect on the neighborhood, there could be somebody down the road that comes in under the same amendment of the ordinance that then would want something that would impact the neighborhood. Makes sense?
Megan, no. What doesn't make sense is the agricultural. I can't believe uh, uh, from a neighborhood to agriculture is all, is a long jump. And we're we're covering where somebody can't come in and do a wholesale business that makes little if any noise. Uh, you could be talking about somebody doing an internet product that only sells wholesale and ships. We're talking about that our ordinance doesn't cover that?
No, it does not.
Along those same lines, Mister Chair.
Go ahead, Ken.
In a property that I have that I had in an embroidery operation in there and they are one of the most silent, non-intrusive, non non-bothering businesses that there are, I've been associated with. It wasn't them, but it was another one.
I'm gonna say that once you zone it commercial, it opens the door for anything
Right.
Commercial though.
I agree with that.
Whether or not they want to do that.
Mister Chair, that's why I think we need to look at something like Charlie's talking about. There has to be some lower zoning that you still could somehow work in business like that into it.
Mister Chair, Megan's got me convinced, but I'd like to know when we change that.
Couple of comments, I guess.
Go ahead.
Well, I mean, you can look throughout the city and there's in the county, I'm sure, there's numerous places where you have residential right up next to commercial. You can't argue that. It's gonna I can't say that I am a big proponent of it either, but as time goes on, you see that happening throughout the city, all over the place, in every direction. Number two comment, I guess, is that probably could have came a little bit more prepared if I'd have known that they were recommending denial before we got here. So I don't know how that normally works, but we were not aware of that when we walked in the door today.
Mister Chair, I can think of one we worked on a long time ago. Gentleman actually bought totaled out motorcycles. He's in the valley amongst residential. He fixes them, he crates them up and he ships them out. He does no retail business, anything else. And we have that going. I I can't believe we've removed the right, when we're out in Ag, to put a quiet business without changing the zoning. We'll make it temporary. We have dropped that clauses in a lot of conditional use permits so that they go away when the people or the owner goes away. Or if this business changed hands, the new owner has to relocate it. But I, but apparently, and I believe Megan, she reviews these things. But I just can't believe that we've done that. I'm sorry.
I.
Another comment I have is
Go ahead.
Didn't you just approve a business out in the valley?
Uh, Cosec Environmental Planner, that was a in-home occupation. A- and again, if there was a home on the property which they lived on, the option would be there for them to do an in-home occupation. It's just there is no home that they currently live on that property within that one point zero acres that they're trying to rezone. There's there's a house, so there's no in-home occupation that can be allowed.
Thanks.
Paint warehouse that you, they just approved was an in-home?
That was a in, correct. That was an in-home occupation because they live on the property.
Yes. Go ahead.
Uh, question for Cody. So Cody, the 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 one point one acres that we're talking about, that's within a a much larger acreage, is it not?
Correct, yes.
So what's the total acreage of that property that's on there?
Just a little less than sixty acres.
Little less than sixty? Okay. So we're talking about one point one acres to be rezoned for this purpose. Okay. So my, I I guess my question uh for you two would be relative to what we heard before with the uh high water conditions on that property. Has that been taken care of? So they're not, have no concern with the, what, high water?
All the maps have been, you know, engineered and.
So.
That's where the building sits is above grade.
So Cosec Environmental Planner, the structure meets the base flood elevation for the floodway, but there's no guarantee that it won't flood. It can still flood even though it meets that base flood elevation.
Additional questions?
The, yeah, the the residents that would have to be on that property to make it a home business, does that have to be lived in by those folks?
I don't know the answer to that.
Does it just has to be a residence? Could it be a manager that lives in a house trailer? I I mean, are there some variations here? I have no idea.
I can answer that question.
And the neighbors aren't gonna like a house trailer either.
I, I don't, we don't plan on living there.
True.
I'm just, I'm just, you know, thinking, I think out of the box a little bit on this thing.
Yeah. Um, well, currently staff recommends denial of comprehensive plan amendment CA twenty-two dash ten. It sounds like the applicants were not aware of that. Um, there's options moving forward. Uh, this could be continued um or we can vote on it. That's where we're.
Mister Chair, I move that we deny without prejudice.
Is there a second?
Second.
Do they understand what that means, without prejudice?
Oh.
Okay.
Cody? Can you explain when we say deny without prejudice, what that means?
So a a denial without prejudice would be that the the planning commission or the board of commissioners uh are are missing something that they want for, to recommend approval on or denial on. And it gives the applicants time to time to get that information to the Planning Commission or to the Board of Commissioners, depending on who recommends it, to fix that issue under the same application. They'd have to send out new notice letters and new advertising for the date. I don't know if staff would really believe that a denial without prejudice would fix the issues that we're talking about, because it would still be a commercial property inside, in a residential zoning. I think that Commissioner Johnson's concerns are better addressed elsewhere in the ordinances, whether the Planning Commission or the Board of Commissioners direct us to make changes or look into those changes. I don't believe a deny without prejudice would fix, really, or change staff's recommendation in any way.
Thank you. Further discussion?
I guess I agree with Cody, except that sometimes time does produce an answer. Just gives them a little time and we don't spend money for them again.
Yeah.
That's my two thoughts.
Okay. Further questions? Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Normally, when there's a motion on the floor, I, we cut it off, but you have additional comments, sir? Is that correct? I want to, come on up. Come on up. I want to make sure that we get it out.
I don't, that building was zoned for anything but storage. I don't, when, when he came to you or whoever, he came to get the permits to build that building, he was told he can't live there because there was no supporting stuff there for him, okay? So, I don't, do you know how that, that little piece is zoned? Was that zoned out of the, because all that...
It's all zoned agricultural right now.
Right. All that down there, though, was in the flood plain. All that other property is in the flood plain. The only thing that is in the flood plain is where he built that building, because that all came from, I don't know if you remember, they put a big ditch through there to help drainage. All that went over there. They just stacked it over there, and then they decided to just flatten it out, you know? So that's kind of like a little hill there in the middle of it, but right along the road.
True.
So I didn't know how, how that was zoned right now, or what permission that he's got for that building.
So there is a building permit for the building. Zone, currently it's zoned agriculture, so without looking at the building permits, seeing the building permit, I'm guessing it's gonna be an ag structure for storage, for agriculture purposes. That's what the purpose of today is, is to try to rezone the one acres to allow that structure to be used for commercial.
Mine is not with the business. It's just with how all that's structured out there, and it's probably built for something else, and not like, like you guys would build a commercial building if there's gonna be commercial going in there, but that's up to you anyway. Thank you, guys.
Thank you. Motion on the floor is to deny without prejudice. Further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We are on item 18.
So, item eight, CUSAC Environmental Planner, item 18 is Rezone RZ 22-11. It is to rezone 1.10 acres from agriculture to commercial district. The applicant is Lowell Fleeger. The owner is Harley Moore. Again, the property is located at 651 Green Valley Drive. It involves 1.10 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district, with agriculture as the land use. There was floodway on the property. Staff was recommending to denial of Rezone RZ 22-11, but with the previous motion for agenda item 17, staff would recommend to deny without prejudice.
Mr. Chair, I'd make that motion.
Second.
Motion to deny. And second, further discussion?
Without prejudice.
Without prejudice, excuse me. To confirm, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. I would propose that before moving on to the next agenda item, we take a 10-minute recess. Anybody opposed to that? All right, we're in recess. We'll come back at 11:25. Thank you. 11:25, we're good, Joan? Good, Jerry? 11:25, we'll reconvene and continue on. We're on item number 19.
All right. Item number 19 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-09, to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant is Justin Kistler. The agent is KTM Design Solutions. The property is located at 23040 Radar Hill Road. The property consists of approximately 9.6 acres. This rezone request is in response to proposed plating that they're doing through the City of Rapid City's three-mile plating jurisdiction. So I'll just have some comparisons on the screen. The current zoning right now is agriculture. The future land use is agriculture. They're proposing rural residential district, which is a three-acre minimum lot size requirement. This was routed around through the interdepartmental review process. There were just a couple items from the City of Rapid City. They are working with the applicant on a plat. They are requiring that the applicant get city water on that property, so that property will have city water and a private onsite wastewater treatment system. The Rapid City Regional Airport just had commented that they would recommend that the aircraft and airport, airport noise disclosure statement be attached to the parcel. And there was one letter of opposition that was received regarding this request of some concerns of traffic on Radar Hill Road, but staff found no significant issues with this request. There is suburban residential just right across the street with a lot higher density zoning and much smaller lot sizes, so staff is recommending approval of this Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-09.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
Help me here, Brittany. I look back at property history and then, and I understand A, and then you get to B, Conditional Use Permit 2211. Can't say I remember it, but anyway, double wide. I assume that this picture doesn't incorporate that in it.
Right. So they had just submitted the building permit for that single-family residence, so they were in front of this commission. They got a conditional use permit to live in that double wide why they built their single-family residence. So in lieu of removing that double wide, they're actually plating the property into two lots.
Okay. In other words, that's why that is, and there's no double wide on the property yet?
There is right now. There was existing.
It's gotten moved on now since the permit?
No. So that, the picture that's on there right now, that is the double wide mobile home. They got a new...
Oh, that is the double wide.
They got a new building permit for a new single-family residence. So in lieu of having to remove that double wide mobile home, once the single-family residence was completed, they're plating the property through the City of Rapid City, so they can have two lots.
Boy, they really lost me, because doesn't the 2003, it says double wide home and garage? So that's 2003.
That's existing on the lot, correct.
Right. But then we did another one, CU, in 22, that you just explained to me.
Right. And then they have...
And that is the same one, or it's another one?
That's the same one from 2003. So they're living in that one while they're building the other house.
Got me. Thank you.
I'm gonna broaden the subject a little bit. There's going to be, in my opinion, continued requests for development along this corridor in the residential and other things. In some previous items, there was a lot of discussion about a traffic report that was done, maybe in cooperation with City of Buxell. Don't quote me on that. Is that, has there been any additional progress as a result of those reports and communications?
Yes. Actually, the Highway Department is working with a contractor right now to look at and doing a new transportation study. They're also looking at trying to get additional funding for improvement of Radar Hill Road. So the Highway Department is working with our office and with other agencies to work on a study and getting some dollars to get Radar Hill Road improved.
Thank you. Any further questions for staff? We do have one speaker request form. It's from Ronald... Cordis?
Thank you. My name is Ron Cordis. I'm, I live at 14790 Buckskin Lane, which is this kind of kitty corner from that lot. My question before, I think my name was Brittany, before she kind of answered my questions about how, what, I was especially concerned about the density, because being a philanthropist, if he was a philanthropist, if I can pronounce that correctly, I would be taking advantage of the situation too in adding more homes. But in this situation, it looks like two homes and even three homes based upon the rural residential, because I'm fine with that. More fun with that, so I have no objections to it, so. Thank you.
Okay. And did I understand that you were...
The President of the Ball of the States, which is part of my concern, and it's very helpful to know about the traffic assessment, so I can pass that information on to my board members too. So, very helpful, so.
Thank you. Additional questions? Does anyone want to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-09. Is there a motion? Is there a motion for approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-09?
So moved.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 20.
Item 20 is the rezone request associated with the previous Comprehensive Plan Amendment. It's Rezone RZ 22-10, to rezone 9.6 acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. The applicant is Justin Kistler. The agent is KTM Design Solutions. The property is located at 23040 Radar Hill Road. Again, now with the previous motion for the Comprehensive Plan Amendment being approved, this rezone would be in alignment with the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, and staff did recommend approval of Rezone RZ 22-10.
Questions for staff? The airport disclosures being included with this, correct?
Yes. That was a request by the airport.
No questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none. Staff's recommending, staff's recommending approval of Rezone RZ 22-10. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item 21.
Item 21 is Preliminary Plaid PPL 22-20, to reconfigure lot lines to create track one, track two, track three, and track four of Rockerville-Goldtown subdivision. The applicant is Douglas Bell. The owner is Rockerville-Goldtown LLC. The surveyor and engineer is DC Scott Surveyors. The location is Rockerville. It consists of 26.5 acres. It's currently in a planned unit development that will allow fourplexes, apartments, and some commercial uses. There is no special flood hazard area on the property. The layout plan, LPL 21-76, was approved by the Board of Commissioners in December 2021 of this year. They have met the majority of the conditions on this layout plan. I did actually speak with DNR after the staff report was completed, and they have conditionally approved their water and wastewater system for this project. So that was one of the items of concern. The only other one was that the surety has not been posted for the utility installation, so we will work with the applicant prior to the final plat being filed with the Register of Deeds, whether those improvements will be made or the surety will be required. The section lines have been vacated in lieu of dedication and improvement in these areas. This proposed plat is in harmony with existing uses and zoning in the area. This plat will actually get rid of a lot of those weird interior lot lines, so it'll actually make it a little bit cleaner for the planned unit development. And the applicant is in the audience. If you have any other questions, but staff is recommending approval of this preliminary plan with conditions.
I want to confirm, I heard you correctly. DNR has conditionally approved the water and wastewater treatment system, yes?
Correct.
And surety has not been posted for the utility installation, but will be, or, or a plan provided for the utility installation prior to the plat being filed?
Correct.
I have no questions.
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Charlie.
For Brittany, when you look at the, under the property history, 15 and 16, my thought there's, there's going to be vacation home rentals, all sorts of different property uses on there. Have you guys talked about how you're going to configure or format a homeowners' association and a road district in that kind of multi-use type of situation?
Yes. We have actually met with the applicants on many occasions regarding the homeowners' association, the road district, covenants, working in which lots will allow vacation home rentals and which ones aren't, and then amending the PUD accordingly. So we have met with them.
Wow, that's gonna be quite a challenge. In fact, I'm looking forward to seeing it, because I could see more of these coming forward, and that would be a difficult thing to format because of the vacation home rentals. They may be absentee owners. They could be, I look forward to seeing what you guys come up with, with the owners.
Well, we're working through that, so our covenant, so the PUD conditions and the covenants are not in conflict with one another, so we have been working with...
They overlap rather than conflict.
Correct.
Thank you.
Further discussion? To confirm, I don't have any speaker request forms on this. Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plan, PL, PPL 22-20 with 11 conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second to, for approval, further discussion? Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
All right.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item 22.
CUSAC Environmental Planner, item 22 is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA 22-11. It is to amend the Comprehensive Plan to change the future land use from ranchette district to rural residential district. The applicant is Martin Cost. The owner is Russell Johnson. The location is off of Palmer Gulch Road. It involves 6.63 acres. Current zoning is agriculture district. It is vacant land, and access is off Palmer Gulch Road. Current zoning within one-half mile, there is rural residential district, open space, and agriculture district. And future land use, there is rural residential, ranchette district, and open space. For infrastructure, the roads, Palmer Gulch Road is a 24-foot-wide gravel road, and the property will be accessed off of a 40-foot access easement. It will be served by private water and sewer. This was routed off interdepartmental review. No major objections or concerns were received. The applicants are proposing a plat that will be heard on the June 13th Planning Commission meeting to readjust the lot lines. Rezone RZ 22-12 will be heard on the next agenda item. Rural residential allows a lot, single-family residences on large lots, and staff finds no significant issues with the request. This appears to be in harmony with the existing land use within the area and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure, and the majority of properties within a half mile are large lot residential. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment 22-11.
Questions for staff?
This is right across the way from us. I can't see any problem with this. It's a pretty clean deal.
Cool. Anything else for staff? We do have a speaker request form here. It's from Brent Karp. Sir, if you'd come forward, state your name, and you get to the lectern.
My name is Brent Karp. I live directly across from the access road for these lots, and this is, this, this, uh, single access to this property, if you look at the current property that the owner has residence on, is a very narrow front edge to the road of Palmer Gulch, as you can see there. And he has combined the roadway, so all points directly come together at the road. Well, my driveway is directly across from that, and my house is only 50 yards from that access road. So that's what I get, I see, and there's gonna be additional, a lot more traffic if they build three more residents up there, or two more residents up there. So that's what I get, I see, and there's going to be additional, a lot more traffic if they build three more residents up there or two more residents up there. Um I'm a little concerned also is it's a single point egress if there is such a a hazard. And also that there's the people that are on that road drive very, very fast. And I also see it as possibly a safety hazard. Um and the current owners, um basically they're they're planning to cash their chips in. And they're they're going to sell their home and everything else. So they're not even going to have invested interest in in this property once the the zoning has changed, if the zoning has changed. So if there is fire, there's only one way for those people on the farther lots to get out.
Questions for the speaker? Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Can I also add that it will reduce the the um desirability of my house because it's so close to this intersection?
Okay. Thank you. Any additional uh people in the audience wish to speak on this item?
I have a question for Cody.
Go ahead.
How, where is the access easement on?
So this is their current their current uh house. The access easement comes up the lot line like this and it it comes over. They're just, they're changing the lot lines. So theoretically, right now, he could uh do an access easement and still build two houses on there without going through the rezone or the comp plan. The reason why he has to is because he's alter altering those lot lines. So he's going through the plating process, which now he has to conform with the zoning ordinance.
Thank you.
Further questions? Sir, if you want to, if you want to speak again, please come forward.
In that, in that picture, it doesn't show the current road that he's already put in and the culverts that he has entered. So there is an updated uh approach to that. And I think that picture is a little bit misleading because the roadway also has a culvert on that side of the road. And it is very narrow, the opening to that, those future lots.
Okay. No further questions? Staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-two dash eleven. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
So Cody, do we have a a map that shows the new road then?
Uh I do not currently have a an aerial that'll show that map now. I can see if I if uh.
The layout plat has the.
The the layout plot shows the the access road. It just won't show the actual aerial of what's what's there. But I can double check on rapid map and see if we can, if there's an aerial that's different. So I guess the twenty twenty aerial kind of shows shows that road coming up there.
Palmer Gulch, right there. Comes up in this gentleman's house must be right.
He's got it up on the screen too, guys.
So this is the twenty twenty aerial. You can kind of see what looks to appear to be a road being either built or constructed.
Okay. So where's this gentleman's house?
Directly across.
Across the street, right?
That sounds right there where the arrow is. And this picture here shows the road under construction. It's since has changed up and up to where it actually joins the roadway.
Any further questions?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Charlie.
So then there is only one access off the Palmer Gulch? We're not going for another that's forty foot wide?
Uh correct. It's just uh one, that one approach with a forty-foot access easement that'll go up and access those other two lots.
And then how far does the new road go before it it juts off? Just approximately fifty feet, sixty feet?
No, no, it goes back there quite ways.
No, no, I mean before it comes off the access, the new road.
So the the road construction, it looks like.
Or the new driveway.
It sits a little farther back. The actual access easement has it right up against the property line. So I don't think they've built that road within the in the center. But I believe if you look at the access easement, that's in your packet, it shows that this whole approach is the access easement coming up.
That's what I was getting at. It wasn't, it wasn't fitting what I was seeing versus and I read the forty-foot private access and, okay.
I'm guessing he built it on the twenty feet on this side is what the road was built on of that.
I just split the difference, you think?
I I think he uh depending on how those lot lines adjust, because obviously it'll adjust a little bit.
Mm-hmm.
It'll, I'm guessing the lines will move a little to the west. I I don't believe that the road that he built is is centered in there. I can confirm that with the um surveyor when we bring the uh preliminary plat in from the planning commission on the thirteenth.
And then my second question would be, how far then is that? You see it as being done or somewhat done now? How far is that away from your home?
Fifty, fif- approximately fifty yards.
Okay.
Or s- yes, no, excuse me. Yes, fifty yards. I I'm sorry.
Hundred and fifty feet.
Yep.
Okay.
Additional questions? Thank you, sir, again for your comments. Anything else for staff? Noting none, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-two dash eleven. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for the discussion. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on item twenty-three.
Uh C O S A C Environmental Planner. Item twenty-three is rezone R Z twenty-two dash twelve. It is to rezone ten point four seven acres from agriculture to rural residential district. Again, the applicant is Martin Cost and the owner is Russell and Kimberly Johnson. Involves ten point four seven acres, currently zoned agriculture district and access is off Palmer Gulch. Uh again, existing land uses in the area are large lot residential and that's what the applicant is requesting to uh rezone to. So staff recommends approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash twelve.
Questions for staff on this item? Noting none, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this? Okay.
For the same reason, um and it would be nice to actually have a photograph of what that looks like. It it really distracts from my house. My my friend in my house faces this. They have um, I believe it's class four gravel dirt and it's it's just I I see it as a safety hazard. I see it as um a a point of congestion. And what keeps these lots from being divided into three acre uh lots in the future?
C O S A C Environmental Planner. Currently, that's on a dead end road system. It currently doesn't meet the forty lot rule, but if those properties were subdivided farther down, it'd hit the forty lot rule and then that would be the the stopping point for the plating.
Does that answer your question, sir?
It does, but it really does distract. It's it's a, it's a thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Questions? Noting none, staff recommends approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash twelve. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-five. Excuse me, twenty-four.
Uh C O S A C Environmental Planner. Uh item twenty-four is comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-two dash thirteen. It is to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from rural residential district to highway service district. The applicant landowner is Dale and Julian Simonsma. Uh app or the agent is Martin Cost. Location of the property is at one three 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 Silver Mountain Road. It involves one point nine four two acres. Uh currently, the zoning is highway service district and agriculture district. Existing land use is vacant. Access against off Silver Mountain Road. Uh current zoning within one half mile, there's rural residential district, uh planned unit development, uh general ag and highway service and open space. Uh future land use has rural residential, open space, uh and highway service district. So the applicant, uh currently, there's a little portion of, he's going through the plating process. You'll see his preliminary plan in a couple items. Uh there's a little portion of what is proposed lot one that's already highway service. He is looking at rezoning the northern portion of of that lot, what you see in that red hash to highway service to ma- match the existing uh zoning for for that lot. And again, there is a highway service in the in the area. So with that, staff is recommending approval of comprehensive plan amendment twenty-two dash thirteen.
Questions for staff?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead Charlie.
Just Cody, just a suggestion for an old geezer like me. I have to get my magnifying glass out to figure out which piece of property we're talking about on here. And I don't mind saying that. I mean, I I still want to serve, but I had to find it and I had help this morning because I didn't find it. I was tired enough when I got home from my trip. But I had the same thing on the two point zero nine. And if you could help us sometime with something in the way of a asterisk or something, it would be appreciated.
Absolutely.
I think the rezoning map, this one, I was having a, I was struggling reading through everything and figuring out what was going on until I got to this and this made things uh layer in my mind. So thank you for that. Additional questions for staff? Hearing none, anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? I don't currently have a speaker request form. Noting none, staff recommends approval of comprehensive plan amendment C A twenty-two dash thirteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty uh five.
Item twenty.
Yes.
Item twenty-five is rezone R Z twenty-two dash fourteen. It is to rezone one point nine four two acres from agriculture district to highway service district. Again, the applicant landowner is Dale and Julian Simmonsma. The agent is Martin Cost. The property is one three 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 Silver Mountain Road. Uh again, uh current zoning in the area has highway service. He's requesting to rezone a portion that northern portion from agriculture to highway service. And with the comprehensive plan amendment that was just recommended for approval, uh staff is recommending approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash fourteen.
Thank you. Questions for staff?
Just one.
Go ahead.
There used to be on this same group uh property, there a trade-off lot or something with the state, wasn't there?
I know that the that there's a portion to the the south right here that's not within his portion that was allowed for billboards.
Okay.
And then there's the access easement that you'll see on the plat. Um that allows for access to those, only specifically for those those advertisement signs.
Thank you.
Further questions? Confirmed, does anyone wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends uh approval of rezone twenty-two dash fourteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-six.
Item twenty-six is rezone R Z twenty-two dash fifteen. It is to rezone two point zero nine nine acres from highway service district to rural residential district. Again, the applicant landowner is Dale and Jillian Simmonsma and the agent is Martin Cost. The location of the property is one three 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 Silver Mountain Road. Uh current zoning, so this portion involves uh this little square right here that you'll see on the board. Uh it's currently zoned highway service. Uh the applicant is requesting to rezone to rural residential district, which is what the future land use also has it as is rural residential district. Uh there's large lot residential in the area. So staff is recommending approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash fifteen.
Questions for staff? Does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Hearing none, seeing none. Staff recommends approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash fifteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion on the item. Noting none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-seven.
Item twenty-seven is rezone R Z twenty-two dash sixteen. It is to rezone twenty-six point six nine zero acres from agriculture district to rural residential district. Again, the applicant and landowner is Dale and Julian Simmonsma and the agent is Martin Cost. Location of the property is one three 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 Silver Mountain Road. This request is to rezone uh twenty-six acres from highways or from agriculture district to rural residential district. It is everything that we haven't approved uh yet. It's all of lot three, most lot two and all of lot four. Again, future land use shows this property as rural residential district and that's what he's requesting to rezone to. And there are a lot of large lot residential in the area. So staff is recommending approval of rezone R Z twenty-two dash sixteen.
Thank you. Questions for staff? Noting none, to confirm, does anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Seeing none, um staff recommends approval of our rezone R Z twenty-two dash sixteen. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for approval, further discussion?
Just one. This is, some of you won't realize this, this is going to clean up a a kind of a contentious area along the road there that the neighbors and the folks are involved in. And it's nice to see this come forward. Thank you.
Noted. No further discussion. Uh had the motion and the second, correct? Jerry? Yes, okay. Thanks. Um all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're on on to item twenty-eight.
Item twenty-eight is preliminary plat P P L twenty-two dash twenty-one. It is to subdivide to create lots one, two, three, and four of Oak Draw subdivision. The applicant landowner is Dale and Julian Simmonsma, the surveyor is Martin Cost. The location of the property is one three 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 Silver Mountain Road. It involves approximately twenty-six acres. Uh current zoning is agriculture district and highway service within existing land use of residential. Access is off Silver Mountain Road and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The applicant has uh has requested rezones R Z twenty-two dash fourteen, fifteen, and sixteen and comprehensive plan amendment, those was just approved. Access to the properties will be through a forty-foot access and utility easement. Uh the Board of Commissioners approved the layout plan back in uh March and the March, early April. Uh this was rather often under department review. The highway department states that an approach permit must be filed with the highway department for lot one prior to the issuance of a building permit. And the applicant's request appears to be in harmony with existing lots and current land uses in the area. So staff is recommending approval of preliminary plat P P L twenty-two dash twenty-one.
Questions for staff? Noting none, anyone in the audience wish to speak on this item? Again, noting none, staff recommends approval of preliminary plat P P L twenty-two dash two one with nine conditions. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Motion and second for their discussion. Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed, no. Motion carries. Item twenty-nine.
Item twenty-nine is minor plan unit development amendment P U twenty-two dash zero seven to amend the sunset ranch plan unit development to allow a dirt bike track on the subject property. Uh this item was continued from the May ninth, twenty twenty-two planning commission meeting in order for um residents and staff to get a hold of the original developer. Um our understanding was that the developer did not support this and that was the reasoning for him allowing it on lot sixteen. Um all indications were that he was supposed to be here today. Um. I've heard that he's out of town and he was going to try to make it. I don't see him in the audience. But staff is still recommending denial of plan unit development amendment P U twenty-two dash zero seven. If there's any other questions?
You, did staff speak directly to him?
No, we did not speak directly to him. I believe that there are audience members and there were people from the subdivision that did speak to him directly, uh that he indicated that he was going to be here. Um I did go through a lot of the old notes from the original when they went back to that um sixteen or that lot sixteen. Um there wasn't any indication in any of the previous um information that he was going to construct it. It was just going to be allowed to be constructed there. So that was kind of the, the indication in some of the testimony and the documentation.
And the P U D was amended in two thousand and eight?
Correct, to allow that on lot sixteen. And like I said, that if you look at the documentation, there was no indication that he was going to construct it, that it was just going to be allowed to be constructed on that lot.
Okay. Additional questions for staff? Noting none. Um the first speaker request form I have is from uh Brandon Woodhead?
Good morning, Council Brandon Woodhead here. Um I was just gonna ask a couple of questions as uh we did leave off on some of it and um as you guys know, we purchased the property with the dirt bike track already, already in place and completely unaware of the fact that it's not per- uh permitted. How do we obtain the storm water permit and how do you address erosion and settlement control? Because that was one of the reasons why it's uh, uh you guys are trying to do, uh trying to um get rid of it, I guess. And uh we had not heard back from a staff member regarding the neighbor's letter being resigned. We want to know that if we let ours become overgrown and use it less, if ours could be uh resigned as well. We feel that maintaining the track and keeping up, keeping it safe is a better option, but we consider this. Um because my neighbor also has a motocross track in his yard, so why was his resigned? Um and he doesn't have any of the permits or anything like that filed on his. Um and, and Dwayne came up last time and said that he resigned it because it was lack of use. Well, I guess how do you determine that, I suppose? Um and then another question is uh many people are complaining that it's a nuisance. Who determines this? If there are complaining, the under that reasoning, why aren't we getting charges for that versus physical structure that can't talk or make noise being complained about? The track goes away, what does, what happens next? We can only ride our dirt bikes on the road or still ride them in the backyard? I guess we're here for the structure, not the noise. So I guess that's, those are my questions.
Um I'm not sure I'm going to be able to answer uh all of, all of your questions. With regards to the storm water permit, I can answer that. That's a, that's a permit that you would get from the county.
Okay.
So they would be able to help you with that in the, in the planning department.
Okay, because we there, I'm sorry, I mean, cut you off. There is already culverts in place in the water, in the high water way um that have been there since the track was built.
Sure, so part of the storm water criteria is, is that if you disturb more than ten thousand square feet, the, and you've disturbed that amount of soil, you then need to get a storm water permit from the county. Uh and that doesn't just go for, that goes for any construction.
Okay.
Quite frankly, um so uh house sites, that kind of thing, some of those things all have to be, that's all part of, of those items. The your question about if, if, if this was denied, you're, you're specifically asking if you could just let the track then be overgrown or if you would have to do the dirt work to change it? Is that, do I understand that to be your question?
Uh yes, that is a, that is the question, but I just, it just throws me off because my neighbor has a track that he's constructed and has also built identical jumps water on, as mine. But his letter got resigned because they don't use it as much as my family does. And as far as I know, he doesn't have the permits to, to build the tracks, so why, why did his get resigned? And he's allowed to use it, let's say, once a month. If it, whenever he pleases, he's still allowed to use it because his letter resigned. Why, like, why is mu- like, why is, why we have to take ours out, but his is okay? Because we're not here for noise ordinance, we're here for a dirt track. Well, you're at a horse in a circle, what's that considered a dirt track? I mean, you, the dirt track, in my opinion, is a very loose termed and, and, and there's, there's a lot of somebody could drive a U T V in their backyard at the same time, what's that going to do? It's going to create a dirt track just because mine's constructed. Like, I guess that's, that was one of our, just my opinion on it, I guess.
I don't, I, I guess at this point, I'm, I'm not going to speak for the, the county staff on, on the, to answer your question with regards to um letting it just get overgrown with weeds or if it has to go away, I, I don't, I don't know the answer to that question.
Yeah, could, because, because we pulled the Google Images just on my neighbor's track as well.
Sure. Brittany, could you come up and help do that?
Yeah, so I, as you can see, I mean, the house right next door, he is also constructed. But his letter was resigned.
And is his track overgrown?
It is overgrown, yes. But he did write it um last week.
Let's, please no comments from the, from the gallery.
I have pictures of him writing it last week.
Okay. Uh again, I, I don't know if I can answer your questions with regards to uh letting it go, getting it overgrown, if they have to seed it, get, get vegetation established. In some of the letters um that have been written and what we have is the, are the facts to go off of in the past.
Yes, sir.
In two thousand and eight, um this issue was uh apparently brought, brought to a point. It sounds like in two thousand and eight, the uh developer had the P U D amended and said that if there was going to be tracks, that they, that they would be um allowed on lot sixteen. Since then, or in parallel or prior, but then didn't get fixed in two thousand and eight, if I get all the facts right here, these tracks were either added to, made bigger, um changed. Um and the, the, the assumption is, is that since, since nothing was done to address those, that, that, that they were somehow grandfathered in. And that was discussed at the last meeting as well, is that because they were not um grandfathered, that they weren't grandfathered in because you, they can't be because they, they weren't approved to begin with.
Right.
Um so the, the, the question on what happens to all the other tracks in the, in the neighborhood, uh I, I don't know the answer to that. And again, I'm not going to speak for the county, the county enforcement and, and those types of items um here because I'm, that's not what we do. We're, we're strictly here to understand whether or not this minor plan unit development amendment should move forward.
Yes, sir.
And I don't know if I've answered all of your questions, but some of them I don't believe I could.
Yeah, no, that's fine. I, I don't have anything else other than that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any questions for Mr. Woodhead? Okay. The next uh speaker request form I have is from uh Kevin uh Beckwits?
I think a lot of this stuff is an eye beholder kind of a thing. Some people like horses, some people like dirt bikes. The dirt bike track might be a distraction to a lot of people. They don't like it. When I was building it, because I'm the previous owner of the house, it, it was an art for me. It was something for my kids, for Brandon when he was a kid. He came and he rode at my house. This isn't, the, noise-wise, I've had plenty of neighbors up to the right, they had horses um between me and the one directly behind it. They said they could hardly hear the dirt bikes. Noise was never a factor then. I owned the house for, who was it? Eight and a half years till I sold it to Dave Woodhead. It was never an issue. Um as far as disturbing soil, most of the dirt that I put on it, I brought in. It wasn't distracted from the land. The bottom portion where there is flow of water, I put culverts in. That wasn't disturbed. I placed a culvert in and laid dirt over the top of it. So I don't know how the ten thousand square foot of, of dirt was moved. Um I've hauled in manure because I like red soil when I'm riding, I'm riding the dirt bike. Um so I'm, I'm really confused at what, what's happened here in the course of time. Most of the neighbors that are complaining about this stuff that has gone on have moved in since I built the track. From the person that I bought the place from, when we moved there in two thousand and six, it was dirt bikes and horses are welcome. It was advertised as such. There was supposed to be a dirt bike track placed out there for us to ride on. They reneged on that. There's supposed to be an A T V track that went all the way around the subdivision for people to ride on all the way around. Um so I started building along with Jude Beckcourt that owned another facility. He got punished because he moved too much land on his own soil. So he got fined for that from Pennington County. I didn't move that much soil. I didn't get punished for that. Talking to the developer, he said, when I was elected to the treasurer of our subdivision, he said, you're doing nothing wrong. He says, you haven't moved a lot of dirt. I'm going to allow you to do this. And then they changed in two thousand and eight. What happened? I was still told that everything was fine. I never got any letters from nobody saying that it was wrong for me to do so. And I talked to the developer on several occasions on it. One of the biggest things was when one of the, the uh neighbors moved in was that they thought I was going to run commercially. I was going to run races out there. Well, that's, it's not even up to the specs of being able to run any kind of race form out there. And the biggest thing for me on this is, is the kids. I've had plenty of kids come out there, starting from five years old all the way up to sixteen years old. This was an outlet for them to go to versus doing something to destructive. They were out coming and doing something constructive, spending their time on the weekends, riding with my boys and staying out of trouble. So I, it, it's, it's breaking my heart in the whole sense of seeing this happen, especially with Dave Woodhead's grandkids. All of his kids ride as well. And now we're taking that ability away when next door neighbor, he moved out there for the same reason. He's one of my best friends. And he's now being allowed to keep a track that's not a whole lot different from the one that we're trying to reject. So I guess that's, that's where I'm at. It's, it's a personal sense for me because I spent so much time out there building this and I watched my kids grow up on it. I watched Dave Woodhead and, and countless number of kids grow up riding that track. And it was never an issue until sixteen years later, we're here. Sixteen years. That's, that's all I got.
Questions for the speaker?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
I do, I didn't catch your name, I'm sorry.
Kevin Beckwith.
Kevin, Kevin, when you first built your track, did you realize or know that it wasn't allowable under the covenants that existed at that time?
It was allowable. It was not rejected till two thousand and eight after I had already built the track. He changed the covenants after the fact.
Okay. And then in two thousand seventeen, again, of course, they were revised too.
Yeah, which I was no longer in the development that time I had sold it. But I had conversations with the guy who created the covenants and it was not an issue. They even said they would allow my track. Well, how could they, we're sixteen, mine was there before that one was.
Is there still a copy of the two thousand and six covenant standing in existence? Anybody has that they know of?
No, but I can, I can guarantee you they can find on the advertisements, I'm sure you could go back, and it was allowable. You're allowed to do anything on your land that you wanted to, they deemed. That you could ride your dirt bikes, you could bring horses, you could do what you wanted. There was no covenants against a track on your lot. They even did the same thing with Jude Beckcourt who lived up around the corner and you could find his track on there as well. He got in trouble because he moved his whole backyard and moved a mountain of dirt. I hauled in most of my dirt and placed it there. I didn't disturb the soil. Along with manure that I got from a local farmer who allowed me to come haul it on in and I enriched my soil with that because it was better riding conditions.
Do both have like jumps and this sort of thing?
Both have jumps, both tracks. I helped him put his dirt on his lot and build his jumps.
When you said you met with him and, and these things didn't?
That's all hearsay. You can take it as hearsay. I mean, that's
Well, I know, I have, but I have to, we do have a certain number of things that are written. One of the things is, is that there is a reply, a written reply. And, and I don't know whether you've seen that, that says that Mr. Kasky said he, he had no time to deauthorize any bike. Um use.
Time to deauthorize anybody?
He said, no time did he authorize in writing any dirt track to be constructed on lot seventeen too. That's, that's pretty specific.
He had no time to deauthorize?
No, he said at no time did he authorize.
Oh, and he, he, he did. Personally, to me, we had a, we had a community meeting when we had elections and he came to me and he said, you got in trouble because he moved too much dirt on his property. He says, but you're not doing anything wrong. Personally, to me, he said that. And he said, he was not going to, going to do anything about it. And we've had several conversations after the fact, especially when people started complaining about me possibly doing commercial riding on there because it looked like I was building facility to bring in races, which is the, you couldn't race on that. It's a small track. It's not wide enough to run bikes on in a race capacity. It's for personal use only.
Okay, my last question would be, when you, when you first purchased the property, certainly you were provided what covenants were in writing at the time when you purchased the property. If you read them, you see that he controlled, which is normal, uh that as a developer, he controlled those covenants for a certain amount of time before he turns them over to a homeowners association, road district, whatever.
Sure.
And you had to understand that too.
My biggest thing is we're sixteen years later and now we're talking about it.
Okay.
Sixteen years later, when it could have been squashed right away. I spent countless hours, hundreds of hours putting that together. It was never an issue.
He did bring up in two thousand and eight though, that he changed it to the one lot.
Covenants, but
To the one lot. So that's not sixteen years later.
Yeah, he, he changed the covenants that sixteen couldn't build the track?
Well, that there was a lot designated for the track.
For the track, which was mine.
No.
Sixteen.
No.
Sixteen, sixteen, I understand that, but I think he confused the tracks because mine was there before and we had the conversations.
He came before the Board of Commissioners to assign a lot. What date?
Two thousand and eight.
Two thousand and eight. Not sixteen, not seventeen, two thousand and eight.
And it was lot sixteen.
And it was lot sixteen.
I believe.
That he designated. I think he had the lots confused because I don't even think Lance lived there at that time.
I just wanted to point that out to you. That's, that's what we get to see.
Right, right. And I, if you look back at two thousand and eight, I don't even think you'll find the track on sixteen. I think he got the lots confused because I've been there since two thousand and six and we had other neighbors at that point in time that lived next door. So if you look back on Google Earth, I don't know if you can pull that up, for two thousand and eight, you'd probably find that that track's not even there.
Yeah, there's no
My track was there.
No, he didn't, he designated that lot for the track. He did, there's nothing body, he was going to build it or construct it or anything. He just designated that lot for that use as well as B M X track. And I believe it's a much bigger lot. There's a number of acres there.
Reneged on. And he said, basically, it, I mean, it is what it is on that side. I'm just saying that when he broke his thing with the dirt track, he told me that I was fine, in person, that I was fine with my track. That's what I'm trying to say.
And that I don't question. I'm just trying to say what's in the record from the Board of Commissioners shows in two thousand and eight, I believe it, that lot, he never said he was going to develop it. He said, that's the lot where it's going to be on because there were, its problems existed at that time. Am I wrong?
No, that's what it says right here.
I guess I'm confused. I thought it was lot seventeen. I am not lot seventeen.
No, it says uh P U D does not state to developer, build, ensure, provide access. Uh but it says the, the B M X racetrack, motocross, and A T V track on lot sixteen revised. So sixteen R of lot six.
Well, I'm confused on that side. I'm just going on a personal level and what I was told. I'm just going on a personal level and what I was told.
Sure.
And.
Yeah. Okay, additional questions for the, for the speaker? Okay. The next speaker request form I have is from Mitch Segwin. Could I say that right? I'm a work in progress here. So what, what, how do you say it? Segwin, thank you.
Hi, my name is Mitch Segwin. I currently live right behind, uh, the track. Um, my wife and I, she had a chance to speak here, uh, about two weeks ago. Um, and, uh, I guess you would say we are affected quite a bit by the track. Um, but first off, I wanted to apologize to Dave, um, and Brandon. I was unaware of what was going on. I did have some gripes and complaints. I just never did anything about it. I just figured it just was what it was. We grumbled under our breath, my wife and I. Uh, it wasn't until we received a letter that, um, we thought, or were aware that we could even do anything. So with that being said, uh, at this point, uh, we have to choose. We have to choose whether we're for it or we're against it. Am I against little kids driving around on it? Great, fine. Uh, the gentleman that said he built it, that's what he said he had out there was little kids. Well, in the 16 years that it's been there, it's obviously grown. The jumps have gotten bigger, the bikes have gotten louder, more people are showing up. It's not just a dirt bike track in a residential neighborhood. Right now, it's my understanding that this area is classified as residential. Is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Um, it's also my understanding that a dirt bike track, uh, is classified as commercial. Is that true? I don't know.
I don't know the answer to that. It'd have to be a business.
So any kind of track like this would be a conditional use in a commercial district?
Thank you.
Okay. So my understanding is that we just need to follow the law of, of what's happened. You know, what, 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 what do we pay attention to here? Uh, we can go into it's a nuisance to Brandon and all his friends. They love it. But to me, um, I don't particularly love it. I'm not, you know, I, I don't want hard blood or, you know, is, you know, between us neighbors. It's, it's not fun. It's not, nobody wants to live like that. I wish we could all live in peace and harmony, but we, unfortunately, there's difference of opinions. What we've got here today, i- i- you know, with everybody coming up here saying stuff, it's all opinion based. We all have them, but we need to pay attention to what is the law? What's the facts? We have to choose here. Um, we've got an attorney here, I believe, that says there is a public nuisance here. That's the law. Um, the, the law itself, I, I just had it pulled up on my phone. What is a nuisance? Well, it's any time it affects anybody. I, I, I'd have to pull it back up, but anyways. Um, so if, if I can, I can babble on all day. But, uh, my question is, is i- i- is, uh, Dave have insurance for this track? I mean, it, homeowner's insurance, but homeowner's insurance will drop if you have a pit bull. What are they going to do with, if they find out you're, you got a racetrack and you've got friends and stuff coming over? Um, again, this is hearsay, but it's my understanding that the previous owner had a, a lawsuit. I mean, I don't know. This is again, just hearsay, but I mean, that's a lot of what we're doing up here is just hearsay and opinions and kind of just telling what we feel about stuff. But when the matter breaks down to, uh, is, uh, we live in a community, um, and, and we need to be respectful of everybody. You know, that's why we have covenances that we signed when we moved in. Um, and then our covenants is, um, signed on 13, uh, or, uh, back in oh eight. And this is the covenants that Dave signed when he moved in. I signed them. It says on number 13, nuisances. No noxious or offensive train or activity as defined by law shall be carried on upon any lot within the development, nor shall anything be done which may become an annoyance or nuisance as defined by law to the development or the individuals residing or owning property therein. He knew that that was a, that could be a nuisance, that would be a nuisance. Well, so he knew that there may be a gray area, you know, maybe it was in, maybe it's legal, maybe it's not. But by looking back in history, no permit was pulled for any of it. So, I mean, we start there. So is it legal or is it illegal? Um, I, I mean, the, the matter of the fact is, is we got to set aside opinions. I like the color orange, you might like the color black. It's irrelevant, it doesn't matter. Um, we signed into agreement when we moved into these properties. Now, my wife and I signed in, yeah, we've only been there a year and a half, but we moved in because there was covenances because we don't want, we want control of our neighborhood. We don't want it to look like other things. So, and, and so basically just because, how do I put this? Give me just a second. When, when, when Dave signed those covenances and those agreements, uh, the question that I have is if we know it's illegal and it was never approved, do we just let it go? Is it easier to ask for forgiveness than it is permission? Well, it's already in there, so we should just be able to leave it alone now and just let it, let it pass, let it go. It's no different than driving down the interstate, knowing you're breaking the law, doing 75. And you got away with it that day. So now it's legal for you the rest of the days to drive 75 down the interstate? I mean, that, that's what it boils down to, to me, is just because it's been in there 16 years doesn't make it legal. You know, and now here we are, 16 years, when it should have been confronted right away. Uh, I, I guess at this point, we just need to, to pay attention to what the law says. You know, this is a residential neighborhood. You know, do, do we put up a concrete plant in my property? Can I? Cause concrete plant would be classified as commercial. In, in some aspects, this racetrack is classified as commercial. I mean, where, where does it stop? Where does it, you know, I mean, we got to stop it to me now if it's, you know, but again, I, I just feel bad for Dave and Brandon because they bought a place thinking that that's got racetrack on it. Perfect, I love racing. You know, little did they know, you know, I feel bad for them in some aspects, but it just is what it is. We all have to deal with it now. So now that's why we're all here, you know? I, I am a firm believer, you should be able to do what you want on your own property as long as it's legal. The minute it becomes illegal or, you know, I, I don't know. But that's kind of what I have to say. I mean, to me, it's, I have to vote here. Do I want to allow it or do I not want to allow it? Do I wish that they could do whatever they want on their property? Yes. Can they? No. Um, so in my vote, if I have to choose yes or no, I'd have to say no.
Sir, it'll be this commission that makes that decision. You don't have to vote.
Okay, well, good, cause I don't want to. I, 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 again, I feel bad for everybody involved. I feel bad for everybody that's got to listen to it in my neighborhood. Um, you're, you're right, it's not every day, you know? But if we all of a sudden grant them permission, who's not to say they're going to make it every day? Cause they can. So I guess at that point, I'm glad it's on your table, not mine.
Thank you for your comments. Does anybody have any questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir, Ken, for your comments. Um, that was the last speaker request form I had for that item. Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on the item?
Hi, I'm Mr. Woodhead. I own the property. We've been, this is our second meeting with this. It goes back and forth. Yes, everybody has opinions. People like them, people don't like them. We don't live in a, we live in a rural area because you have horses, you have livestock, you have chickens. It's not a residential area. If you live in a residential area, you can't have any of that. So you live in a rural area. Yes, the track was built prior to me buying it. Did I know it was approved? Not approved? No. Have I got anything from anybody about nuisance, a sighting? Nothing since I've owned the house. So, like I said last time, kids get bigger, bikes get bigger. Since Easter, the track's been ridden twice. Once by my grandson and once by a friend that just bought a bike and wanted to bring it out to just to break it in. Since Easter, it's been ridden twice. Then I got other neighbors that drive by and stare and give us the bird because we're just, and it wasn't even out there two hours, you know? I understand you guys got a job to do. I was never initiated and told that, uh, the county commission was going to be denying it or what I needed to do to get it approved. They just told me to submit this letter, send these letters out and show up to here. So the stormwater and all this other stuff that they're talking about, I had no clue. They did not communicate any of that with me when I filed the proper procedures and tried to get this approved. So I think there's a lot of gray and black area in this process that should have been eliminated right at the beginning. Now, I'm sorry that we're, you know, taking up so much of your time to try to get this
Questions for the speaker? Thank you, sir, for your comments.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Can I throw something in? Mr. Schindler sent a second rather extensive, but he did meet apparently with Mr. Kaski in a number of the questions that I had asked last time, but the most critical of which is basically if, if it's reported correctly, and it is in writing, I certainly wouldn't do incorrectly if it was in writing. It takes 120 lots before there's a homeowners association, 119.7. He said that there's 48, so give or take six that are under construction at any particular time that fall in the category of completed or incomplete. So basically, Mr. Kaski is in charge of the covenants until that time. And per se, I'm sure he's, has a lot to say about the road districts. I haven't read the covenants. And they did indicate that they were revised in 2008 for what went before the planning commission, I mean, the, uh, board of commissioners regarding a lot 16, whatever dash, whatever it is. And they, they were also revised again in 2017, of which supposedly according to this, the, the property owners receive the copies. So I just wanted to make sure, that is certainly within the right of a developer. Now, how he handles those, then that's his own, not our commission. We only have to go by what the, excuse me? Is he? Okay. Does he intend to correct anything that I'm saying right now? Okay, then I want to continue on until he comes up here. Thank you.
Please, please continue.
But it's certainly within his right to review these as he sees fit. So that's all I'm trying to, that was one of the questions I had is how was it structured? And I wanted to let you know, I feel that's a sufficient answer. That's why he's running the covenants. Takes 120 lots sold to, to, uh, what I call jump off a homeowners association for the administration of the covenants. Thank you.
Further questions? I've, uh, thought about this one a lot, um, here recently. Normally, uh, the items are, um, you said, um, black and, black and gray. Um, not normally they're pretty black and white to me most times. And, um, I, th- this one is a little, a little bit harder. Um, but then if you go back to the past, the, the question of whether or not these things should be out there has, was asked and answered in 2008, that question was. Um, and the answer at that time in the PUD was that, um, it was an allowed use on lot 16R. It did not say that they could be, um, put on all of the other lots. That being said, all the homeowners out there, um, are, are, are living in, under a scenario where, um, one person controls the entire homeowners association. Interesting scenario to me, yet all part of the details and all part of the facts on this. I, I, I sympathize with the landowners, um, and the applicants in this, in this instance because, um, I'm not going to be able to support your, uh, y- your request. And the reason I'm not is, is because the question was asked and answered in 2008. Um, and, and the fact that some of these other things have kind of, uh, been, been allowed uses in the rest of the neighborhood is, is not really part of the question in my mind. Um, and to the people that, and I think I alluded to this at the last meeting, to the people that, um, don't like it because of the noise. It's, it appears that it's an allowed use on lot 16R. So even if it's not in someone's residential lot, that noise may be an allowed use in the future and may be built on lot 16R. And, and that was all agreed to in 2008. So, um, I, I somewhat feel that, I, I mean, I, I will be, I, I will, I will be in favor of staff's recommendation on this. And going and upholding the changes that were asked and answered in 2008. But it strikes me odd that, that, uh, for a lot of the opinionated reasons, like to use one of the speaker's terminology, everyone's has a, there's a lot of reasons that people are not in favor of it. A lot of it had to do with some noise and dust and some of these other things, yet possible to come from lot 16R in the future. It seems like that those were the rules that were agreed to by everybody. I'll simply be voting to go along with those rules as they, as they exist now in writing. And that's all we have to go off of. That's all I have to go off of. I won't be speaking for anybody else.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
The only other thing I wanted to clarify is it's not unusual to be structured the way it is. Uh, one of the most common, um, alternative structures for homeowners association would be Mr. Kaski retains lots to vote by because he still hasn't sold them yet. And in this case, if we were talking based upon what was reported to me today, he'd still have 85 votes. So he basically runs the homeowners association anyway. I, I don't want that to go one note. I mean, it's just how you choose to structure it. And I'm not saying that how he has it structured is wrong. I just want that clear. It could be other ways. And they still have to control, uh, the property they're involved with developing. And, uh, this is just one way is homeowners associations wait to kick in the gear. So Mr. Kaski, uh, controls the, the covenants. Thank you.
Questions, discussion? Anyone else in the audience wish to speak on this item? Noting none, staff recommends denial of minor planned unit development PU 22-07. Is there a motion?
I'd make the motion to uphold the staff's denial recommendation.
Second.
Motion and second for denial, further discussion? All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries.
Co- stack environmental planner. Item 30 is ordinance amendment OA 22-01 is to add section 321, the Hard Rock Mining to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. section 321, the hard rock mining to the Pennington County zoning ordinance. This was heard at the April, I'm sorry, I don't have the date. It was heard at the, the first meeting in April, and the planning commission made some changes. Staff went through and made those changes. Do you want me to go through each one of those changes that were made? Or is there additional changes that you wish to see or?
Well, the only changes that were made were made in red, correct?
Correct. Those were either additions or some, there were some strikeouts, too.
Correct. Okay. So I think what I would, I think what I would like to do, well, I, I want to go discussion on, from the, from the board on, on the changes that were made from the previous meeting. And then I have a few speaker request forms. And so I'd like to go through all of those as well and, and get those comments. And then maybe we do a final, final edit as, as the board wants and recommends to the, to the commission. So let's start on, looks like the first changes were on page two in red. We defined the word log and mining operation. Any changes to, or, or updates to those items? Anyone have any concerns with those? Okay, I'm moving on. Page three, there was an item with regards to, or the definition of the record. This had to do with the log, the blasting log questions that were brought up. Okay. Item two on page four, under public hearing, there were items added essentially to correlate with some of the normal processes that happen here, such that items can be continued, they can be continued with conditions, et cetera. Any concerns with that language?
All right.
The next item was under sec, excuse me, section F, hard rock mining permit application. Essentially, an incomplete application will not be accepted. Any concerns? Oh, one of the words will needs to be stricken. Two wills in a row. Good catch. Item two on G, under section G, general requirements for mining operation, there's a site contact. Any questions on that one? My only thought on that one was that it, it says shall post at the entrance of the property contact information for an onsite contact to be contacted during or after operation hours. If they're shut down at night, I, there may not be a person onsite. I would say, I, I think the responsible person needs to be there as the contact. So I, instead of the word onsite, I would propose to the group that that word be responsible. Whoever's responsible needs to be able to be contacted after hours. The next item was a strike, a strikeout, including one of the following, to include but, but not limited to. Any concerns with that? Under same section G 6B, there was first dot high blast record. Okay, moving on. Looks like there were several pages. Under the buffer zone requirements, there was a change to 50 feet from 200 to correlate with the blasting items. And then there was a strikeout and the addition of some habitable dwelling items.
So, just to speak to that, those come from the aggregate mining. When we were at that meeting, planning committee, the planning commission directed us to look at what was in the aggregate mining. So all of that, that's in red and stricken out comes specifically from the aggregate mining. So it correlates now.
And the, the discussion was, it's based off of the, the, the blasting requirements, correct?
Correct.
Underneath the aggregate mining. There was also some discussion with regards to some of the mining claims that are, are they 600 by 1500?
Yes.
Is that their dimensions?
Yeah.
And the, the, the widths of those? Next item I have is on page 13, under section P enforcement. And it looks like the stop work order would go to the property owner, operator, or site contact. I didn't see any reason to, to not, to not be the responsible person, too. In my mind, that, those are one and the same. The next item was on sec, item four, on page 14, under the same section P in the sixth paragraph. Just for clarification, it was five, section 514 of the Pennington County zoning, zoning ordinance, to not confuse this ordinance with that ordinance. No changes. Okay. I think that that was it. So one, one draft change. Any questions for staff on any of those items? Go ahead, Karen.
Oh, I have a question that's not on one of those items.
Go ahead.
Under abandonment of mining operations under M, it says, if hard rock mining operations are abandoned, new hard rock mining operations shall not be permitted except upon a new application and hard rock mining permit. Temporary cessation approved by the state of South Dakota does not constitute abandonment of mining operations. Is Pennington County notified of those cessations?
Generally, yes, we're informed. The state DNR keeps track of the mining operations in South Dakota, and we receive updates on approvals and different violations with them.
Thank you. It just kind of left a big hole in my brain to, that would we know that?
There's no questions? Okay. I'll get to the speaker request forms. First one I have is from Lilius Jardine.
Good morning, or is it afternoon? I'm not sure.
Afternoon.
Okay.
Yep, 12:48.
Yeah. I'm Dr. Lilius Jardine. I live in Rapid City. And I wanted to just say a couple things quick that are not going to be hopefully too repetitive of what other people are going to say. But there, this ordinance had a section in groundwater in it at one point. And that is a really important section to keep, and it's, it's not there anymore. So I'm not sure what the decision-making process was. But potentially, because there has been uranium exploration in the county in the past, we could end up with uranium exploration again. And if there was to become a mine, I know that's a long way down the road, but that's what the ordinance is supposed to be dealing with, it would most likely be the, the most recent kind of mining, which is called in situ mining, which happens in the groundwater. So if there's not a section protecting the groundwater and the mining is happening in the groundwater with chemicals pumped in and uranium cut loose into the water, I think that's a real issue. So I would ask that the commission look at that again. And then the other thing is, as someone who has a lot that's more than 50 yards long, I was sort of astounded at the 90% reduction over time in the distance from blasting to people's property lines. So that's the other thing I thought, it, it might be important to look at again. So I want to thank the staff for many years of work on this. And it's, it's good that we will have an ordinance. So I, I don't want my comments to be seen as negative towards the ordinance, because I think the ordinance as in total is quite good. So, thank you.
I'm gonna, before we go to the next one, Cody, can you come up? I, help me under, help me remember, is the, is the in situ and the underground mining going to be considered separately? And that's why it was taken out of this?
Correct, yes. And also groundwater is, sorry, Cody Sac, environmental planner. Stuff that was taken out of the ordinance was because after research was, with, into it after the first meeting, looking into state and federal laws, the state and the feds occupy the field when it comes to groundwater and water quality and different things. So we really don't have the authority to really dictate any of that. That all comes with their state permit. So in our, what we put forward in our ordinance is what we feel like the state or what, what the county actually legally can enforce without trying to occupy or get into what other people occupy.
So if someone showed up at the, the counter upstairs and said, hey, we want to do this in situ mining, and we're going to drill a well, and we're going to pump water down there and, and take it out, they would have, they would have to go to the state.
They would have to go to the state and meet all state and federal requirements for that sort of mining.
Cool. Further questions for staff? The next speaker request form I have is from Gina Parkhurst.
Good afternoon, commissioner, planning commissioners. I was going to, my name is Gina Parkhurst, that's right. I live in Rapid City. And my plan was to read a letter written by engineer Richard Rick Bell. But he is here today. So he's going to read the letter because it's pretty technical. And I'm not an engineer, so I think he'll do a better job. But I just want to say that I was involved in the initial discussions several years ago when this mining ordinance was first looked at. And I'm glad that it's being revised and updated. And I just want to encourage our involvement, the public's involvement. You know, when something's taken out, like the groundwater section, it'd be nice if there was some kind of forum like we used to have, where we can all sit down and talk about it. Because it's kind of hard to have a dialogue in this kind of format. So that would be my suggestion. Some kind of public forum, even once a month, a little get together. So, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker request form I have is from Carla Marshall.
Good afternoon. Good to see you all again. Last time I was kind of cut off, so I hope you guys don't do that to me again. But, so when Lilius and, and I know Rick's going to talk about this too, when you have the groundwater, I think it should still be included on there and at least have, you know, groundwater under South Dakota law or whatever. Because if they come in to do in situ mining and uranium mining, they have to have an NRC license as well. So it's a huge process. But anyway, I wanted to also comment that I noticed that in this April 25 report and all the public comments that were in there, they did not include our February comments in there. So my comments are not included in, in this. So it's like the whole bunch of Februaries that were, that had sent in were not included in, in the newer one as well. I mean, they weren't attached. Let me put it that way. They were not attached. I was wondering about the hard rock mining permit application. Because one of my comments was that to make sure to do a background check on the, on the people that are, the companies that are coming in and applying for a permit. And also that on, under the public hearing section, I think 10 days is, is, it's not an efficient time. Because once you get it in the newspaper, or you send it out to people, you know, the mail, you're going to have to send it out 20 days prior to this 10 days notice. So I think, you know, that, that should be increased to at least 15 to 30, 30 days, I don't know. But, you know, increase that because you have to take time for people to receive the mail. And, you know, get that. So I, I would recommend that that is increased to anywhere from 20 to 30 days as opposed to 10. Like I mentioned, the groundwater, you know, it's, we really have to take a close look at that and make sure that it's monitored. It doesn't matter if it's, you know, in situ mining or whatever. But I think, you know, in, in our world, in the natural world, that any type of mining contamination is going to seep into the groundwater. So that should still be part of our responsibility to make sure that that's monitored and make sure that these companies are not contaminating our water. I mean, you, you guys take a look at Ellsworth, what happened out there. So I just think it would be a good, good idea to do that. Also, in the application, if you do like a background check or whatever, that was the other one. Let me see, I had, oh, right here, under section F, 4A, it says, including responsibility to pay required fees and penalties for any violation. So is that any past violation? Future violation? What is that? You know, so maybe you need to put for any past violations. Because like I mentioned, you know, Worf has, their parent company has a company out of Alaska that had like 200 EPA violations in there. So. Let's see. Oh, and on, on the mailing, would, would we be also the ones who did provide the comment, like our public comments here or our comments, would we also be included on a mailing list when you send out notice of the public comment, public hearings coming up? Will we be included, be part of that inclusion on there? So, those that, instead of just finding it in the newspaper three days later or whatever. Is that kind of clear? Sorry. I think that's about it. Again, thank you. I appreciate your work on this. And it's been several years going back and forth with this. So, thank you.
Yes, thank you for your comments. I, I do want to, I want to just mention a few things. The, so the groundwater thing was, was discussed by staff. I, I do remember getting all of the February comments. And so I'm not sure why the February comments aren't here, but all the ones from March are. There was the, this item of a background check that was, that was discussed in the past. And I know that that was, that was not included.
Cody Sac, environmental planner. After researching, we can't do a background check on mining companies' past performances. Gordon, I'll let Megan explain it a little better than I can.
Megan Krueger with the state's attorney's office. So when it comes to local mining ordinances and local regulation of mining, local governments have to be extremely cautious to make sure that they're not adding provisions that are in contrast or in addition to state or federal regulation. There's clear case law that local government does not have the authority beyond that which it is given by the state. And the state has only really given us the authority to regulate the roads, time, place, manner. That's about it. So that's what this ordinance seeks to try to do. It's an effort to keep the county from getting sued by a mining company.
So my, I'm going to hold you over here just one little bit. The, the other thing about the advertisement and the public notice is that is the standard that everything is, does in Pennington County with the 10 days, right? So it's this idea of treating this the same that someone has a CUP, someone has all these other, this is all the same notice requirements.
That's correct. And, and the notice requirements follow state statute. So we typically don't do anything different than what the state statute requires us to.
Okay. So I, I hope that that answers some of your questions. And if you want to come back up and follow up, Carla, that, that would be just fine.
Well, in the application process, are you going to have a line there saying, you know, have you, have there been any violations of you or your parent company? I mean, you don't have to do an actual background check, but they should, they should disclose any type of violations that they've had in the past, I would think. I mean, same as, you know, you go to the bank for a loan or anywhere for, you know, to buy a car, whatever, you're, you're filling out all kinds of stuff on this, you know? So I think something in there, in the application process, that would make sure these companies, you know, aren't coming in under the pretense that they're going to come in and, you know, mine and then walk away from it. It's happened before, we all know that. You know, we can't be naive to this. So, thank you, appreciate that.
Thank you. The next speaker request form I have is from Rick Bell. The next speaker request form I have is from Rick Bell.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chairman, members of the Planning Commission. I'm Rick Bell. I am a, I live at 1206 Clark here in Rapid. I'm a registered professional engineer licensed in South Dakota. I specialize in helping clients mainly in environmental and energy areas. I understand, um, from previous discussion by staff, I was mainly going to talk about that groundwater section they got left. So I'm not going to go into too much detail on that because I understand, uh, that you're referring to a different state area. But, um, I have some other comments and I would just, you, you've done in this, um, ordinance, you've referred to other state laws that may need to be covered. So I think it would be prudent, as Carla mentioned, that you at least reference this, the state laws that the mining companies need to address in order to meet all the groundwater requirements. So if you're going to leave the whole section out, at least make sure that you say in there, this is the section of state law that you need to make sure you followed. So it's, it's clear to everyone.
Do, I'm, I'm really sorry to interrupt, do you have those? Do you have those written?
I, I don't have, because until today, I didn't know why you dropped it, so I'm sorry, but.
Okay, nope, sorry to interrupt them. I was going to write them down if you had them.
I, I don't have them right on hand.
Okay.
So, you know, I was here today just to, uh, you know, express some concerns about this whole process, my disappointment with it. Over the months, you guys have been wrestling with this draft, you've made a number of different changes, some of which I don't think are in the best interest of the residents of this community. And the worst thing about it is the process of these changes being made. It seems to me there's lack of transparency. Now, I, I, I know you say there's red line, red changes in this one. I'm not sure, and maybe the staff can answer as to which version that you're comparing it to to put these few, uh, red marks into this particular draft. And it's difficult to follow, uh, all the different drafts that have occurred over the months that have occurred. So, um, I, I'll give you several examples from some draft changes that have been made since I last looked at it. And when I got the draft last Friday, the 22nd, I immediately went to the previous version that I happened to have, which was from January 22nd. So maybe there was another one that's, uh, was published since then. But I, I'd been calling, trying to find out when is the next draft being published? And then I saw it last Friday, and the first thing I did was, look, why did it go from 19 pages down to 14 pages? So there must have been a lot of stuff that got dropped out, some of which we talked about today. But it set off some bells and whistles and concerns and alarms in my, in my view. So I spent several hours last night creating my own red line version between the two drafts of January and the one from Friday to compare them. And, you know, uh, I would definitely encourage more of this kind of thing, uh, of red line, you know, to, to really make the transparent to, to peoples what's been changed. So I, I just wanted to have a few examples and, uh, and again, I don't know if this has changed since the last version or since January version that I had. But the old number four that was entitled Socioeconomic Impact Study has been completely dropped. And, um, maybe there's a reason for that as well. But I think it's important that the residents of this county be, uh, informed about this issue and not just leave it off the application unless there's some other reason. And, uh, let me just go through the rest of them and then maybe staff wants to respond to it. But, uh, in section H, under additional requirements for hard rock mining operations and specifically number one buffer zone waivers, the hard rock mining operations previously had to be located, when I again went back to January, 500 feet from all exterior lot lines. Then it was changed to 200, and now it's 50 feet in this new version. So I think that's too close to property lines, and I think it would not be protective of nearby residents. And, uh, I would just like to ask the commission and the staff to provide justification for this change. And at the end of the day, go back and increase that to at least 200. And my main grab was with section H, which was dropped. And now you've, uh, explained a little bit about why that is. But for the record, I just, you know, like to go back and express my disappointment or this concern. The last, the seven minutes that's in this particular packet, the second to the last, uh, item in there is a, an email that I sent back in March. And I referred to a, uh, attachment that's not in there. So I marked up what I consider to be important, uh, groundwater monitoring improvements to that little section. And just for the record, I, I want to go ahead and leave it today just because it was left out of this packet. And I think it's important, you know, that all these records be included into what was given to you. We, we're spending a lot of time and effort on our parts trying to help you guys go through these things. And, uh, and again, um, you know, there's two viewpoints here, it's the mining companies and the public. And, you know, you're trying to reconcile those differences. So we appreciate, you know, every effort that you're taking in that regard. But, um, I would, uh, I would ask that when the commission, uh, makes changes that, you know, you're more transparent about, okay, these red lines are from what version? There's not a lot of information here. If somebody has an old copy of a different version, it just looks like you've skipped two or three steps ahead. And that's my concern, and maybe, um, difficult to track this over the many months we've been doing this. And I appreciate every effort you guys, you all have taken, uh, to get this to the point where it is. And, uh, anyway, that's my comments for today. And I'll leave my attachment from the last thing that was missing from the preview, from that packet. So at least it's, it's in the record. And, uh, with that, I will stand by for questions, thank you.
I guess I, I don't see why we couldn't include the references to the other state laws. Cody, if you would come up that, uh, referenced the groundwater requirements? Or is there something that can be put in the, in the, in the, um, in the ordinance that says, you know, in situ underground mining, you know, aren't, this isn't applicable and, and should be routed according to, sub code codified blah, 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 blah?
Yeah, Cody, second environmental planner, I have that note to add that in there, uh, to add that section in there. We can, we'll find that section. I know you asked, uh, Mr. Bell if he had it, but we can, we'll find it and we'll get it added in there.
Okay. So then, the overall question I would have then is, is does this need to be continued once again? Or can we find that right now, get it added and, and move this thing forward?
You can, you can approve it with additional changes. So if there's changes that the Planning Commission sees fit, they can be.
So let's, uh, understand then where, where would that go in the, in this draft?
So what would happen next is we would, uh, work with Jerry on getting it advertised for the Board of Commissioners meeting. There's no specific date, it'll be advertised, uh, in the newspaper, uh, for those. And an agenda will be assigned. I'm guessing it'd probably be, uh, the earliest would be end of June, uh, beginning of July.
Okay. So, but I guess my question was with regards to the groundwater thing. I'd like to understand where, where it would, would you put it in section A, under applicability? Or where would you reference the groundwater stuff so it would be, so it would be addressed and added?
Uh, it'd probably be actually under, uh, section, uh, F, the requirements for the, uh, permit application. Basically stating that they'd have to meet the require, or follow the requirements of in-ground, for the, follow the state requirements for groundwater and in-ground mining.
Or, or would it say that this is not applicable to that? I guess I'm trying to, what I'm hearing is, is that this, this, this ordinance really isn't applicable to the in-situ mining and that kind of stuff.
It'd probably be under the applicability, and then it'd also probably be a section under section F for actual groundwater requirements as well. So it'd be in both, uh, A and F. And I guess staff would not be opposed if the Planning Commission wanted to see the changes that they made before they made the recommendation for approval either.
Sure. Karen? Questions or comments?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Charlie.
Uh, one of the respondents indicated, and that's not the first time we've heard that, in regard, regarding improving our way of notifying people of things and issues that come up. And with, especially with the higher level of technology, we have the electronic. Why people couldn't be listed as receiving, like if there was a hard rock mining ordinance and they were interested in mining, why we couldn't have them on notice to receive that information or ordinance changes? I think we've got to look at this in the future. It came up at the meeting, uh, that you weren't present and it came up with me. And I think it's something that needs to go forward with this. This is a good example of one, uh, Mr. Bell brought up the same sort of thing. When we do have things that are going to come out or be published, that these folks can sign up in advance and say they want to receive this or be notified that it's coming up, not just because they're 500 feet away. I, I think we better look at that and include this in our, our look at this. And it helps on what he was re, talking about. He's applying all his extra time and effort reviewing several copies of things to come up with his recommendations. And, and I don't think we intend to confuse him, I know I don't, by what we do here. Then the second thing is, is I do think when we do announce this going to the Board of Commissioners, people have to understand how limited, uh, and, and Megan pointed that out, how limited we are as far as what is our true, uh, delegated authorities by the state on this. There's some issues that have been running across this platform that we just, our hands are tied. And I think that's what you're referring to when you're saying that at least put the state laws that are involved. And so I support that, thank you.
Okay. Additional questions, discussion? Would you like to come back up, sir, please come up?
I did raise another issue about where, when and how that socio-economic section got dropped out. And so I'd like to maybe just hear from staff about that.
Okay.
Don't mind, thank you.
So, of course, the environmental planner, if the socio-economic part got dropped out, it would have been an accident. I'm pretty sure, I'd have to go back through and look at some of those state laws. I think some of them reference, uh, for their, their purpose, for their permit, a socio-economic impact study. So if it was dropped, it was either because the state requires one, um, or it's already referenced as part of the application packet that they have to submit to us. So if it's not in here, I'll, I'll double check that and look and make sure that it's referenced somewhere. But if it was specifically dropped, it would have been dropped for that reason.
Okay. So will, will you get back to Mr. Bell then on, on, on that?
Yep.
I remember there were, and I, I, we've gone through several iterations of this, and I remember that there were some of those items where it was required in the state permit. Uh, and so it was a, it was a lack of duplication, um, items. Um, or if they do have to submit it to the county, then it would be the same, uh, submittal that they would do to the state, those types of things. But I think we should try to answer that question. Did you have something, Karen?
I was going to ask the same thing, if he could let Mr. Bell know.
Further questions? Okay. So there was, there was questions with regards, or there was, uh, there's a recommendation from, uh, to add reference to the sections of groundwater under applicability, um, as well as in section F, I believe, to direct folks to those, uh, authority and, and governing locations. There were a few red line comments made a, along the way. Are there other comments that need to be added to this? And then my next question would be, um, I, I guess I'd like some feedback to understand if, if, uh, people want to see those changes, uh, and come back in two weeks? Or if we're okay with staff making those edits, adding those, adding those items with regards to the groundwater, et cetera, and moving this forward to the board? Noting none, um, I, I.
Mr. Chair, I'll comment, we had one of our constituents here indicate the word transparency. So that certainly comes to mind on the comment I made that, that people need to get noticed. And he didn't feel comfortable with the notice he had, at least on one section of following up. And he spent his time to come here. So I guess I'd have to support that we do look at it again. And I know that it, it's been kicking around. I have no problem moving on to the commissioners. So the commissioners can root into this thing and get to the bottom of some of these based upon the comments and additions you have. So I'm, I'm totally open on it, but there's certainly support to go either way.
And that's a question that, that we wrestle with. We, at, at some point, we've gone back and forth on this thing for four or five different meetings. Uh, it's gone through several iterations, we could continue that indefinitely. And so the, the question then is, is, is when do we move it on to the board? And I'm, I'm asking for, for the, the feel of the group here to understand. I'm good either way.
May I ask the commissioner, ladies and gentlemen? Do most of the commissioners watch our discussion, uh, on this? I guess I, since we can't put that on as directive, in other words, we move it or we continue it, we're limited in our recommendation, is what I'm asking.
I, I can't answer that, I can't tell you if most of them do or not. Certainly, we know that it's a good idea that we should be, uh, but whether or not that happens, I don't know. But, uh, if you want my two cents worth, uh, I would just soon see it come back here. So that when it is moved forward, it basically is in the exact form that you'd like it to move forward.
I, I'm good with that. I would just say that, um, more times than not, there will still be tweaks next time. So, um, with that, staff recommends approval of ordinance amendment OA 22-001. Uh, there's also a discussion about continuing this. Is there a motion one way or the other?
Move to continue, uh, to the next meeting.
Second. Motion in second to continue to the next meeting, further discussion? Okay. So at, those, those laws will be added, the references to the, the groundwater requirements?
Yep, everything will be referenced today, and then I'll work with, uh, Jerry as well that if it gets approved at that Planning Commission meeting, we'll have a, a date for the board meeting that it can, it can go on. That would be advertising fees or the advertising requirement.
So we. Say that again.
So we can, we can, we can look out, if it's approved at the June 13th, um, Planning Commission meeting, we'll have a, a meeting picked in, in the future for the Board of Commissioners meeting that it'll go to. So people in the audience who, who come to speak on it will know what meeting that goes to without having to see it in the paper.
Okay.
As well.
All right. I, I want to bring up the, some of the questions about public notice I'll do later on in the agenda and not take up the item, the, the time on this agenda item. Further discussion? Motion in second to continue to the next meeting. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries, County Board Report, item 31.
There's just one item, uh, they concurred with all the Planning Commission's recommendations from the May 9th, with the exception of the Plan Unit Development Overlay PU 22-06 for Katie Smirnova and Brett Wolfish. This item was continued to the June 10th, uh, Board of Commissioners meeting in order for them to bring other information forward.
Thank you. Items from the public? Noting none. Items from staff? Nothing. Items from the membership? I want to, and Megan, I may be asking you these kind of questions, but this idea of having some sort of an additional message board or email that goes out that announces ordinances that are maybe coming down the, 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 the progression, coming to the meetings and some of these other things. It, I can, I can think of a few things. One, who decides what goes out? One, who decides what goes out, what doesn't go out? Will, will people consider pre-notice on these things somehow? I don't want to. Favoritism one way or the other, discriminatory one way or the other, all, all kinds of things that come up when, in my mind, in general, I think it would be a good thing to have more information out there and be readily available for everyone else, but I don't think it's as easy as just sending them, sending whoever an email just because they want to be on an email list out there. Help me out here. What am, am I, am I on the right page?
Yeah. And I think, I think probably the confusion from the public comes down to, well, why can't you just send us an email or why can't you just mail us all this stuff or why can't you call us? We follow state statute for a reason because if we don't follow state statute or we're doing something that ends up accidentally being less than state statute, we can get sued and your decisions can be overturned. Perfect example of that is the Abada case, I think from 2017, where the last time we had a mining ordinance, notice was not done correctly, we were sued, our ordinance was overturned. So part of the reason why we just follow state statute to the letter is because it's the same for everything and the staff doesn't have to remember a different notice requirement for every different thing that comes in front of them. You know, they know it's 10 days for letters. They know that it's, you know, a certain amount of time for all of these things, no matter what the item is. So for staff, I think it's the easiest for, from my legal perspective, I think that it protects the county more because if you have different requirements for all these different little things, like say we put an ordinance for mining ordinances, you have to email this list of people. Well, they're getting notice in the newspaper. They just have to buy it and read it. They get notice on the board up at the county, you know, the county board and that's actually partially required by state statute and partially not. We put some stuff in there that is more than what we need to. But as far as the requirements at state law, we follow those pretty diligently because that is what we've gotten in trouble with before. Because once you start doing things that are different from state statute, everybody forgets what the state statute is and then they're like, well, what if we did seven days instead of 10? And then that's where people get in trouble because they forget what the rules are. So I mean, there's nothing to say that we couldn't do it, but my preference is that we just follow state statute because then all of the planners know what they're supposed to be doing. They know what the state statute says, they know what the rule is. And when you start deviating from that, it just causes problems. So that's why it's always my preference to just follow state statute because then I know that the planners know what they're supposed to be doing. And we don't accidentally, say we changed it to 30 days and somebody forgets that it's 30 days for mining and they do 10 instead of 30. Well, then we've just violated our own ordinance. Because everything else we have is 10 days. Right, Brittany? Yeah.
So my next question then is, we've done these ordinance amendments and sometimes are fairly simple and there's zero people in the crowd and, and then you get to another ordinance amendment or you're creating an ordinance and there's some people in the crowd. And we've, we've approached these things different, kind of based on the, the maybe involvement or the, the amount of changes and those types of things. To speak to the transparency item, I, I do like the, when things are stricken and, and redlined, so on, on changes that are made in the, in the future with, with staff, I think that that is the easiest to read. I think it's the easiest to, to comprehend from people that are, that see some of those changes. And there were a lot of rewrites that, that were done that everyone may or may not have involved with, but I've tracked them through all of the meetings that, that we've had. But if you were to go back to the original start to this and look at it now, I understand the, that things would be hard. And I don't, I, so, so the transparent way to do that would be for us to repost everything that's been done in the past and now all of a sudden our packet gets from 500 pages to 800 pages. So I'm not sure I have a answer at this time for that because all of those things are online in the packets through the, through, through the time. But yeah, homework assignment would be to go through all of those if you're not here every two weeks hammering through them. So I don't know how, I don't know if I have a great answer for that one, but it's a good question, Charlie. Go ahead.
The, the people that propose these thoughts to me, I don't think they're talking about anything but transparency and the fact that they see us as working for them. They see you as working for them. They see you as working for them. They aren't concerned about the convenience of a mining ordinance and, and how it goes through and whether we have to bring it up again or, or stay here until 3:00. What they're concerned about is knowing whether that mining ordinance is coming through and then they leave it in their lap. I'm talking about the Native American representation. They want to know whether that's there and there should be in our electronic media. There's got to be a simple, concise way of notifying them and then leave it in their hands. I'm not talking about sending them copies of all these things. Let them pursue that they now know it. And that was the thought that I had bringing this up. There has to be a way to do a better job of notifying people. The newspaper, I, I ventured to say the newspaper, when we started publishing in the state of South Dakota is great from running behind times. What the subscription level at the Rabbit City Journal?
Charlie, could I actually briefly speak to that because we tried to amend that ordinance? We actually tried to amend that statute and the newspaper lobby came out against it.
He's scolding me about interrupting until I'm done. There is a lot of difference in the subscription level. I don't even subscribe to the paper anymore. And the reason is, is because it's not worth the, the amount that they're asking me to pay. I'm on a mailing with them. It would got over $700 a year. That's a joke for what we got. I didn't even get it two days of the week. They, they, I got three of them in one. That's what you're seeing a lot of the pending county citizens getting and facing about these issues and whatnot. That's why I, I have to support where they're coming from. They should at least be on some sort of notification. I don't think we can afford to advertise them, but they, there should be a way through our electronic media to let them know that something's going on, that they've asked specifically to be notified about.
So every two weeks, the electronic packet is posted on the county website? And are you, so would it, would a generic email that would go out to an email list that people have asked to be put on, say, and just say that the packet is now online like we get from Jerry?
God forbid I bring this up. They, I don't think that's what they're interested in. In other words, if there's a mining reference in there, there's an ordinance change due to mining, which takes some type of, and I'm not smart on the, the electronic media, but they talk about the Facebook things and the things earmarks that trigger actions and whether we can come up with that through our program so that these folks can get notified, I don't know whether that's even possible.
Well, now you're talking like some, what of a smart database that's going to send specific emails to specific people from the government, mind you, for notice when the notice is there on the website. I don't know if I could go along with that, Charlie. I, I think that the.
Signed up for it, I'm asking. In other words, they came in and said mining and that was what they, I don't suggest that they list the whole gamut of different things.
But shouldn't the monkey be on the, on our back to have it on a board and let them take a look rather than have them, you know, somebody forget to be notified and then they get mad at us because we didn't do our job? I mean, we need to do our job, put it on a board and then it's up to them to look.
Megan wanted to advise me on the paper, I'd have to go the other way about the high-tech side. There's a certain amount of us out there that only have high tech because we pay a lot of money for it from the satellite and we don't have a whole strong background in, in operating within the parameters of it. So you're correct. Both are a problem. I'm just suggesting that there, we have a certain amount of population out there that would like to be more involved than they, they feel unhappy about are not being more transparent as Mr. Bell put it. Thank you. I don't know the answer. I'm with you. I don't know.
I, I, the burden is, it is posted to a board, it is posted to a website. It goes up there on a, on a regular basis until state statute would change to provide for additional, before state, unless state statute would change to, to provide for additional notice on, on things beyond the notice requirements that are set forth. I think I've been wrestling with it here for the past 10 or 15 minutes in my brain. I think that there'd be way too many open doors into areas that would cause us more grief than, than the benefit, knowing that it's already posted, but that's just my thought.
Only other idea I had was whether the commissioners had ever authorized a monthly type of review thing that's published as an item. In other words, you want to review what's going on in the county, that somebody steps forward and goes through these items and if people have additional concerns, they can follow up and get their copies and whatnot. That was the only other. In other words, where citizens could show up once a month on Tuesday at 10 o'clock or it's an item that's published. In other words, that they're specifically looking for operations type changes and things going on in the county. That was the only idea I had and that takes a lot of changes just to put that in the fix.
Sure. Is there any sort of county update that's done?
I don't know if it was, it would be done through the commissioner's office, but I don't believe so because if it's not required by state statute, we just typically don't do it.
Do you guys have a monthly update from the commissioner's board?
Well, yes, we do. But it comes from, from our manager to give us, and she gives us basically a, a weekly update from the commission office to, to the commissioners. Probably doesn't go nearly into as much depth as what you're talking about here.
And Gary, correct me if I'm wrong, but that's just to the commissioners, right? I mean, it's available online. Anybody can look at it, but it's mostly for your guys' information, not necessarily the public.
No, it's not.
Yeah.
Further discussion? Anything? Last item on the agenda is adjournment, item 35. Is there a motion?
I moved.
Second.
Motion in second? Yeah, that hung out there again. That's two meetings in a row.
You just say that.
Further, further discussion on adjournment? Noting none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no. Motion carries. We're adjourned. Thanks, everyone.
From Hill Cities.